I call to order the regular business meeting of the Lakewood City Council on September 9th, 2024 at 7:14 PM. To connect with the council meeting, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any length on LakewoodSpeaks.org, an online forum for public comments. We are leaving online public comments open during the council meeting tonight and through 10 AM tomorrow. Anyone who would like to address the city council will be given the opportunity during general public comment this evening, as well as throughout our agenda on the appropriate business items. We will give you the rules as we get into that public comment, but it's a limit of three minutes per person, or 10 minutes of pooling time. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Strom?
Here.
Oliver?
Here.
Mayak Guerrero?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Sharzai?
Here.
LeBier?
Here.
Nystrom?
Here.
Lo?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Sinks?
Here.
Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. And if you are able to stand, we ask you to please do so with us, to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Afterwards, we'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2 Prince B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2 Prince B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. First of all, this evening, we'll start with our consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, could you pull item 11 and 12?
All right. Any others this evening? Seeing none, will the clerk please read the amended consent agenda into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 5, Resolution 2024-46, approving the 2025 reappointment nomination of Sonia Estes to the Board of Directors for the Alameda Corridor Business Improvement District. Item 6, Resolution 2024-47, approving the 2025 budget for the Alameda Corridor Business Improvement District. Item 7, Resolution 2024-48, approving the 2025 operating plan for the Alameda Corridor Business Improvement District. Item 8, Resolution 2024-49, approving the 2025 budget for the Lakewood West Colfax Business Improvement District. Item 9, Resolution 2024-50, approving the 2025 operating plan for the Lakewood West Colfax Business Improvement District. Item 10, Ordinance O-2024-23, declaring the intent of the City of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for the construction of storm sewer facilities from Teller Street to Pierce Street between West Colfax Avenue and West 16th Avenue, for the completion sidewalk connections on West 16th Avenue, Reed Street, and Lakewood Place, and authorizing negotiations with property owners, acceptance of conveyance instruments, and condemnation of real property interests subject to further council approval.
Thank you. All right, and I, a quick note for those of you that are joining us either online or here in chambers, the consent agenda, we won't go individually through each of the items, that is the nature of the consent agendas, that we will vote on that as a collective, but we'll point out that we do have information available on Lakewood Speaks regarding those different topics for those that may be interested in learning a little bit more. I do not have anyone signed up this evening to speak on the consent agenda before we not have public comment on this topic. Is there anyone that wishes to speak now on the consent agenda this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close public comment on the consent agenda. May I have a motion for this, well, these items?
Mayor Strom, I move to order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance, and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda, items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second. All right, do we have any council questions or comments? All right, with then, please go ahead and cast your vote on the consent agenda. And that passes 11 yeas, 0 nays. Will the clerk please read item 11 into the record?
Item 11, Ordinance 0-2024-24, amending Lakewood Municipal Code Chapter 10.15.010 to reduce the speed limit in residence districts in the City of Lakewood to 25 miles per hour.
Okay, thank you. And I should note, on items number 11 and 12, those are both first hearings, so what we are doing tonight is actually voting to put that posted publicly so the comments see, or the public sees that these are coming forward to city council for a vote in the next couple of weeks, so these do not have a public hearing associated with them. May I please have a motion for item number 11?
Mayor, I move to order Ordinance O-2024-24, introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post, with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance.
Second. All right, and will you please cast your votes for item number 11? And that passes 10 yeses, one nay, the nay being Counselor Oliver. Will the clerk please read item 12 into the record?
Item 12, Ordinance O-2024-25, adopting Title 10, Chapter 46 of the Lakewood Municipal Code regarding the establishment of an automated vehicle identification system.
And may I please have a motion?
Mayor, I move for the adoption to order Ordinance-O-2024-25, introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance.
Second. All right, thank you, and please cast your votes. And that passes seven yeas, four nays, the nays being Oliver, Mayak Guerrero, Ryan, and All right, moving on to item number 13. Will the clerk please read item 13 into the record?
Item 13, Ordinance O-2024-21, and Ordinance amending Ordinance 2023-39 regarding the acceptance of the devolution of certain property from the Colorado Department of Transportation to the City of Lakewood and approving an intergovernmental agreement thereto to correct the legal description.
Okay, thank you very much. And likewise, I do not have anyone signed up for item 13 for public comment this evening. Is there anyone that would wish to speak on item 13? Nope. Okay, may we have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2024-21 on second and final reading.
Second. All right, and with that, do we have any council questions or discussion on this Okay, we'll go ahead and start the vote. And that passes 11 yeas, 0 nays. Item 14, will the clerk please read item number 14 into the record?
Item 14, Ordinance O-2024-22, amending Chapter 14.02 of Title 14 of the Lakewood Municipal Code to allow sleeping units that are part of a city-approved transitional housing program to be considered temporary shelters that are exempt from strict compliance with the requirements of the International Billing Code.
Okay, thank you very much. And with this one, I will note that we have, or at least in the very recent past, had 14 comments on Lakewood Speaks for this topic. Again, that will stay open through this evening. Anybody in the audience that would prefer not to come up in front of everybody and speak, you can put your comments in LakewoodSpeaks.org, or we will have public comment in a few moments, but first, there is a staff presentation also available on Lakewood Speaks, and we will be getting a presentation from staff this evening as well. Director Kirschbaum, do we start with you, or Mr. Hensel? Okay, all right. So with that, I will go ahead and hand the floor over to our Director of Public Works, Max Kirschbaum.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This evening, Keith Hensel, our City Engineer for Development Services, will be presenting a summary presentation of a version of this presentation that was posted on Lakewood Speaks, but before he does that, I have two prefatory comments that I'd like to lead off this evening. One of those just for context is that on May 20th of this year, during a study session, the item from the Housing Policy Commission update, city council provided a consensus for staff to develop the necessary code changes that would be required to the Lakewood Municipal Code to allow a sleeping unit. That's what brings us here this evening, is a return based on that direction from council. Second, while various concepts may be being considered or developed, I'd like to just be clear that the city currently doesn't possess any property or have any project prepared for the application of the changes to this code. This code would just, this code change would just lay the foundation for any future initiative that could come before council. And with that, I'd like to turn over to Keith.
Okay, as Max said, my name's Keith Hensel. I am the City Engineer for Development Services, of which the Building Department is part of. On the screen here is a picture of pretty typical layout for a pallet shelter community. I don't know exactly where this picture was taken, but it's very representative of some of the units that we've seen in Denver and Aurora recently. The Building Department has been watching this progression of these types of units very closely for quite a while. And what brings us here this evening is that as we look at these types of units and anticipate that they may or may not be proposed here in the future, we want to make sure that we have the tools available to address these types of units in our building process. We feel it's very important that we do a thorough review on these types of units, and that we take those through the permitting process with inspections as well. This is a little bit more of a close-up shot of what is called a pallet structure, and I'd like to note that the term pallet structure is actually a branded name. It is the manufacturer of this particular unit. Although these units are so widely used right now, that a lot of the discussion that we have about these types of communities revolve around the discussion of pallet shelters. This particular unit by pallet is pre-manufactured. It is built in a factory out of the state. It's put together in components. It uses a number of proprietary materials and construction methods. It gets part of its name, the pallet portion, from the fact that it's put on a pallet and it's shipped out to the site. It's constructed on the site. It's constructed on the site. Now, these are widely used, but this type of construction and the materials that are used do not fit any specific category or construction type that's found in the building code. This poses a number of problems for us when it comes to trying to review this type of unit for use here in Lakewood. The building code does have a variety of single type of requirements, things such as snow loads and wind loads, other life safety issues that we can apply, but it doesn't fit neatly into one of the packages that the building code is designed for. Larger prefabricated structures, say, a prefabricated house, those are all approved by the state. And when they come from the state, they have a certified plate that gives all the information for the building code and the building departments to review and approve. Something like a pallet shelter does not include that state type of certification. Now, the building code does not do a great job of identifying the requirements for this, but it does do a good job for defining the use. Within the building code, this definition for sleeping unit is referred to. As well as defining what a sleeping unit is, it also defines what the sleeping unit is not. It's not a tiny house. It's not an ADU. It's not an addition or part of any other dwelling unit, and it's not intended for private residential use. Temporary shelters, such as sleeping units, fall in the middle of the housing continuum. It's between homelessness and permanent housing. These are intended to be temporary structures in nature. So, but it is in between, it falls in with a number of other housing types. When we talk about sleeping units, the array of sleeping units that can be utilized is quite wide. These two units happen to be units, I believe, are being used in Denver. They are constructed of more conventional materials. They can be constructed on the site. They can be constructed as panels and portions of units offsite, brought onto the sites and constructed. They can use a wide range of materials that are proprietary as well, certainly in the roofing, certainly in installation, foundation types can vary widely. Even though they may use more conventional materials, it may look more like a easily constructed shed, they also offer certain code challenges. They may be a little bit different than the pre-manufactured units, but their size and the use also has things that don't fall into the building department's requirements for structures like a full-size house. Okay, tonight, we're proposing two changes to the existing building code. Before you hear, it's the definition that I showed you earlier of the sleeping unit. The text in, the normal text is directly from the building code. The text in bold is the new language that we would like to add. Sleeping units and any supporting structures, including bathroom, shower, meeting facilities, that are part of a city of Lakewood-approved transitional housing program shall be considered temporary structures. The term temporary structures here is not to talk about the constructed structure, or that it's going to be used for a short time. The term temporary structures here in this sentence refers to a specific section in the building code, under which we would use to regulate the review of these units. The language regarding the transitional housing program is intended to separate a use for sheltering from a use that may be another commercial use. There are some commercial uses that could, in fact, build sleeping units. We specifically want these requirements to apply to those that may be used for a city type of project, or a city-approved type of project. I also want to note that supporting structures is important here, because manufacturers like pallet not only supply the units, but they also supply structures that support those units, like the bathroom facilities, the shower facilities, and meeting rooms. These types of products that they provide are also constructed out of the same prefabricated materials as their units, and would thus not fall within the normal category of things that we can review and approve through the Building Department Code. The second item that we would like to change is, we would like to add some language under the temporary structures portion of the building code in Section 3103.1.1 Conformance. And what we'd like to add is, where the approved, where approved by the building of Lakewood, building official, and the fire code official, sleeping units and supporting structures that are part of a city of Lakewood transitional housing program shall not be required to conform to all of the requirements of this code when the city of Lakewood building and fire code official determine there are practical difficulties or impossibilities involved in implementing the provisions of this code. So, the reason that we're asking for this is that because there's such a wide array of types of shelters that could be presented to us, we're looking for a little bit of latitude, so that we can take the core principles that are established in the temporary structures section, which you'll see above, where it says, temporary structures and uses shall conform to the structural strength, fire, safety, means of egress, accessibility, light, ventilation, and sanitary requirements of this code. Of all the code sections that we looked at, and we looked at possibly putting this language into, this language in the temporary structures is the most straightforward to describe what we are trying to achieve in our reviews. I also want to mention that when we identify that there will be some parts of the code that could be excluded, we are also referring to the section in the temporary structures code that refers to the length that these structures would be approved for. In the code, it states that temporary structures are allowed for 180 days. We would want that exemptions, because it's not practical to put up these structures for 180 days and take those down. The type of building materials, the type of construction, how they're put together should be much greater factors in these decisions than just what the temporary code refers to as for 180 days. It's important to note that in the temporary structures section, it also includes structures such as membering structures. For example, the tents that were erected for restaurants during COVID, those all fell within temporary structures and had to be permitted and approved through that type of section. So, temporary structures covers a wide variety of things. That's where the 180-day requirement comes from, but I want to make it clear that we would be approving structures for much more than 180 days. These tools are important because of the diversity of the potential structures that we may need to review. The Building Department feels very strongly that these structures need to be reviewed, permitted, and inspected. We want to ensure the health and structural integrity of all those that may be depending on these structures in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just checked Lakewood Speaks, we actually have 26 comments on this topic this evening, as of right this moment. And one note on that, for comments that are included on lakewoodspeaks.org, they are included also verbatim in the meeting minutes for records in the future. That doesn't happen for speakers that are coming up. We try to summarize everything, but Lakewood Speaks, you will be able to see that as part of the meeting moving forward. So, with that, I will now open the public hearing on this topic, and we do have four, or I'm sorry, three residents signed up to speak on this topic this evening. We'll start first with Wendy Schrader, then Robert Maranzino, and then Chris Maranzino.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I had pre-prepared some notes, but listening to the presentation tonight, I kind of changed that. I think it's clear to anyone in this room and anyone listening online that there are a lot more questions than there are answers here. And reading through the comments, I saw getting the cart before the horse. We're asking to change city ordinance without understanding where this is going to apply, who it's going to apply to, and giving way too much leniency to what's going to happen. I noted that he's, in his presentation, Mr. Kirschbaum said, no property or project, or any future initiative is currently outlined. And I want to ask y'all if that's really the truth, because I can't believe we're changing city ordinance without a property or a project in mind. It's especially coincidental that there's a meeting this Friday, the 13th, with Jefferson County Schools. It appears to be a not-available online meeting. There's no agenda currently published for that meeting. And so, I'd like to understand, knowing that there are four, maybe five, school properties still on the market, how that relates to this, when there's no properties that are currently identified. It may, or they may or may not be proposed in the future, so we're changing city ordinance, again, for something that may or may not ever happen. This is probably the first time I've ever heard that happen since I've lived in Lakewood. No budgetary impacts associated with adoption of this ordinance. I would say, who will fund the city of Lakewood's transitional housing program? So, there very definitely is city budget impact here. And as a homeowner in Lakewood, and I'm sure there's many property owners here, they would say, how is this going to impact if you decide to put this next door to their home? So, there are significant budgetary or monetary, maybe not directly to the city budget, but to everyone's budget who lives in the city, that are impacted. Then, so the, so there are so many questions, not enough answers, and you're making, you're giving leniency to the building code official to just make these changes. If I come to you as a property owner and say, hey, city building official, I'd like to put a shed on my property, give me some leniency. You know how far I would get? I'm sure there's people here who have said the same thing and gotten zero leniency. So, I think this is really irresponsible at this point, to take on changing city ordinance for something that you have no plans for, at least no plans that you're willing to be transparent about at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maranzino, welcome.
And Chris will not be speaking, yes, she's opposed to it.
Okay. Chris, if you'd like, lakewoodspeaks.org, you can put your comments in there.
Okay. And my comments are fairly brief, but again, I'm opposed to this. I'm opposed to Lakewood just changing the building code to suit Lakewood. No property owners or commercial development has afforded this, and only Lakewood benefits from this change in code. And the IBC is already the minimum standard that buildings should be constructed to, so to change it to subminimum makes no sense. The other key point, and my takeaway, is you're calling it temporary shelters, but even in tonight's prior briefing, he's already saying, this is not temporary. This is for structures that will appear for far more than 180 days. These will impact the communities where they're put, and it's just a bad deal for Lakewood. So, please, think about the community before you go and just start putting up temporary housing wherever you feel like, in a park, on adjacent lands, that impact the homeowners in Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close the public, public hearing on this topic, do we have any others that would like to speak?
Mayor, we have two. Amber Varwig, followed by Brad Bruce.
Amber Varwig, Ward 2. I want to start with a poem my sister wrote. It's called "As I Die." Never let your conquer your heart, let love rule your soul and passion drive your mind. Never let living be enough. Before you die, have the courage to be alive. She had no idea, she had not a clue she was going to die when she, I mean, we're all going to die. She died not long after she wrote that, but of course, we all believed she had it tomorrow. And so, let's talk about that. I don't think I've ever heard of executing a plan without the planning stage, and I'm not, I'm not, you guys. I always tell you guys, I don't, I don't do what you guys do, it's a lot, and thank you for doing it. But I don't think there's anything wrong with acknowledging, I'm not going to dance around, I don't think there's anything wrong with acknowledging, there's a homelessness crisis happening, and that if we don't do something, we will be complicit in the deaths and the destruction that occurs. And I've talked about this, you know, I feel very, very strongly. And, you know, gosh, there's so much I want to say to you, that it's, it's relevant, it's valid, but gosh, where do I start? On June 2nd, at 7:00, and it might have been 6:40, it's hard, you know, it's PTSD. Kristen isn't responding. I did a handspring out of bed. I had just recertified CPR, because the only place you can go in Aurora is the Health Sciences Library. I did it right, but I didn't know that there's only about a 3% chance, so it didn't matter. She died in my arms, because the shelter we were at was negligent, because, God, these homeless people just keep existing, if only they would go away. Can't you leave my town? Can't you leave my city? Can't you leave my road? We're people, and I'm not homeless anymore, but, but I'll never not be, because I won't, I will never allow myself, if I won the lottery today, I would never allow myself to look away. I have the courage to be alive. I have the privilege, because she's not. My Uncle Mark was found. His body was so badly burned, we don't understand how it happened. He froze to death, we think he was trying to stay warm, because there was no shelter. My aunt died in a motel room, from an infection she picked up being on the street, because there was no shelter. How, I lost my, my first baby, because I was exposed to the elements. I'm so lucky to be alive. That's why I'm here, because as long as I'm alive, I will be here, I will fight. Let people have shelter, and don't even pussyfoot around it. People deserve life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. You can't stand in the way of someone's ability to life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. Shelter is that. Thank you, and I hope you consider what I said. Have a lovely night.
Hi, my name's Brad Bruce, I live in Ward 2. I would like to speak in favor of this proposal, I think it's fantastic. Like Amber just said, there is a homeless crisis, homelessness crisis happening, I don't know if you guys have been outside lately, but this is fantastic. I loved that presentation, I learned a lot more about it, about the program, so, yeah, I have nothing to say, but this is great. I frankly don't- I frankly don't see how it could possibly reduce the home prices of people who live here, since the homeless people are already here. They're already living on the streets, they're already living in tents. So, yeah, I mean, any structure other than a tent is going to be better than dying on the street. So, yeah, I don't have very many more thoughts, other than I support this, I think you guys should support this, I think this is great for Lakewood, great for Colorado. And, yeah, we're stronger together as people, so no one deserves to die on the street, no one deserves to die from lack of medical care or lack of food, and this is a, one small drop towards a better future, where people are not dying of their basic needs not being met. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wish to speak before we close? Ms. Reddick? We'll have you come up and speak, and then after, you can sign the sheet.
I'm Connie Reddy from Ward Three, and I'm against the shelters being built, not that being built, but I'm against them not monitoring how they're building them. Because if we're building a shelter, and she wants shelter for people, so they're not out in the cold, but if you have a building that's not properly safe and livable, what point is it to have shelter? If you have wiring that isn't proper, and it doesn't have the right, the right type of building, and if it's not built right, there could be a fire in the home that will burn you to death. You could have windows that aren't properly, and you're still going to be cold. It needs to be properly built, and until you come up with some type of building that is properly built, that they can have a safe environment, under the warranty and inhabability law, you are to have a safe at, environment and a safe building where to live in. That is the law. So if you're going to build something, build something that's proper, not just a building, just because, do you think homeless people want to live somewhere where it's not safe? So you need to go through the regulations in order to have a building that is safe for somebody to live in. And the homeless deserve just as much as anybody else to live in a home that is safe. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing this evening. May I please have a motion on this item?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2024-2022, ordinance O-2024-22 on second and final reading.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, and with that, I'll open the floor to council questions and comments. And we'll start with Counselor Stewart, then Counselor Matt Guerrero, then Counselor LaBure.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions to clarify a couple of the concerns from the community, first involving safety. So I just want to clarify around what the purpose of these modifications are, and whether or not it affects the actual safety of like the electrical, the wiring, the insulation, and things like that.
So these changes are being requested just for that exact purpose, so that we can ensure that these are safe. We want to make sure in those inspection process, that the heaters, the air conditioners that need to be part of these units are properly wired and safe for that type of structure. The issue that we have is not to try to avoid safety, but it's to try and take a manufacturer's unit that was put together that works very well, and then try and analyze it with a code that wasn't intended to look at that type of structure. But the, the goal here is safety of all the structures, that's our paramount concern. To do that, we need to be able to look at each structure and how it's constructed, and determine where we may have issues. Even with the pallet structures, you may know that pallet structures come in two types. One type is a lighter weight type that does not meet the wind loads and the snow loads that Colorado provides. We would not be able to approve a structure like that, that can't demonstrate that it meets basic requirements of structural loading for those types of things. In addition, ventilation, access, there's a whole list of things slated in that temporary section that we will be looking for. It's just difficult to find another section in the code that applies to all these different types of structures. And we need to be able to pull those critical elements from the different sections and say, "This is what makes this type of unit safe. This is what makes this type of unit not something that we want to see in Lakewood."
So I'd be correct in saying that the goal of these modifications is actually to make these structures more safe and habitable?
That's correct.
And the question about why we are doing this now, when we have currently no identified property?
It's common practice that code always precedes a project. If we didn't have code in place, what would we ever evaluate a project against? So, number one, you asked us to bring this forward, that's reason number one, but reason number two is, so we have the provisions in place so that we could properly analyze a project when it does materialize in the future.
So as an example, when Safe Parking Lots was first brought in front of Lakewood, we had some issues with the code in order to allow those to exist, but at that point in time, we already had a provider who was willing to provide that service, and we actually had to delay the provision of safe shelter to folks who could have benefited, because we didn't have our codes in place at that point in time, correct?
That's a good analogy.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Thank you. I mostly just want to thank staff and the community for the amount of work that I know has gone into this moment. I think for folks who are maybe more recently following this item, I definitely understand and can appreciate and sympathize with those concerns that you're asking clarifying questions on about, is this already about a specific project? Why now? And the answer is, we've been working on it for two years, at least. And that, I know that I had my first conversation about pallet shelters, I think, in my first six months on the job. And I think everybody, if not most of us, have toured this kind of facility at this point, right? And so, and then we've also had sort of multiple points of discussion with community, with this body of city council, with the previous city council. And so just recognize that while this is, first of all, a relatively small code to allow for the investigation of what these projects could be like, to allow for the investment, because at this point, if we invested time, money, et cetera, in a project like this, and the code was, was what hung us up, that would all just be a waste. So I think this is a great place to start, and I'm thrilled to see this moving. And I also just want to remind us, and I think it was also in the presentation, that in the HPC memo, at the beginning of the summer, late spring, this code change was something that we as a body unanimously requested. Both city council had consensus around that memo, but the HPC also had unanimous agreement in the authoring, that is one of our main priorities for this year. And in part, that is because it is something that is the code and not the full project. So we will have these continued opportunities to work with community, work with each other, to think about how to best implement something that would benefit from this code shift. I also think that the, the point about costs, as we figure out what these projects will be, and what the programs and resources that have to be, is also something well taken that I got some questions about. And something that I want to note is that, that, to the point of many of the comments in favor, is that there are already, there's already a homeless population here, it is already costing money, it is already impacting both those people's ability to survive as a primary ethical reason to continue to problem solve and invest in this, but also from a deeply pragmatic level, emergency services cost more money than preventative services, and temporary housing, transitional housing, and then the programs that can coalesce around those places to bring people into permanent housing solutions, is a much cheaper investment per person. So you end up with a more ethical solution, and you also end up with a cheaper solution. And this just is such a great, great and excellent step on that continued path of trying to do what we can, frankly, about a national housing and cost of living crisis at the local level, which is to provide the relief that we can to the individuals that are within our jurisdiction. And folks living on the streets in Lakewood are living in Lakewood, and we owe it to them as well.
Counselor LaBure.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question about Chapter Four, Section 406. It's on the mechanical access of parking garages. Is that, are we currently prohibiting mechanical access to enclosed parking garages in Lakewood? If that makes sense.
I'm sorry, is that related to the shelter?
Yeah, it's in the building code amendment.
So, most of the texts that you, you have seen...
Are in the ordinance.
I think most of the texts that you've seen in there is the code and amendments as they already exist, you've already approved them. There's only, in all of that material that you reviewed, there's only the two changes that are currently before you tonight. Those are the two that Keith had on the screen.
Okay, so it's the underlined.
Yes, now I'm following where you're coming from. The rest of that text was just there, because it's the completeness of what's already been approved.
Okay, got it, because I was confused about that, and I was going to ask, we're talking about garages.
Thank you, it's a good, it's a good question, so it's just procedurally, it's just those two items that are being amended in the code.
Perfect. All right, thanks.
Counselor Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. Really excited to see this on the agenda tonight. Mr. Kirschbaum, could I ask you to just comment a little bit on, on the next steps here? I mean, one of the things we heard is, you know, okay, so we don't have a site identified, which, for the reasons that I think Counselor Stewart already articulated, makes sense, and that you articulated, that this is an important prerequisite, and you're responding to council's desire to move this forward. Could you comment on what, you know, assuming we approve this tonight, what the next steps look like to actually identify a site? And if possible, can you, can you do your best, it's probably a little challenging to handicap the, the projected timeline, to when we might actually expect to be serving people with these types of temporary sleeping units?
I think part of that would be, would be directed through the work of the Housing Policy Commission. I can say that the planning staff, which includes now a, a fully staffed housing function, is looking at the concepts, and I'll repeat what I said in my introductory comment, that the city has not acquired a piece of property for this purpose, nor has a project been developed. But as members of the Housing Policy Commission know, there have been various concepts discussed, and how they might work, and what kind of, what size of properties it would take to support a project, what size a, a project might be as a starting point, all of those things. So, yes, those discussions are taking place, that's why we have the housing staff in place in, within planning. As far as a timeline, I, I cannot speak to what that timeline would look like, but in speaking even with the city manager this morning, it's not, such a project is not reflected in the 2025 budget at this time. So if it were to be in a budget, it would, it would be after that point, or if there was a project before a future budget, certainly that would have to come back before you for those expenditures, whether it's the acquisition of property or purchase of materials to support a project. So if it's, if it's within this next year, you would certainly see it again. If not, you would probably see it in a subsequent budget.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. If I may, and I'm, I'm happy to continue having discussions with staff about this, we don't have to resolve this tonight. My understanding is, you know, just speaking to sort of the next steps, you know, before a final site could be approved, and, and these temporary units can be placed there, there's likely to be some sort of, you know, special use permit necessary, or it would go in front of the planning commission. I mean, there are a number of different steps that would have to happen before this could be finalized. Is that correct? And I'm happy to sort of, we can certainly talk about this in the, in the context of the HPC, if that's a more appropriate context.
That's correct. I don't know exactly what that process will be, I would suspect that'll be a special use permit as well, but that's also one of the reasons that we included the language about city-approved project, because that's the way we can ensure that all of those things, not only just the building pieces, but the site functions, how we get services to the site, how we do everything from sanitary sewer to clean water to trash, all of those things have to be evaluated and vetted through that, that process.
And so just to put a fine point on this, in terms of some of the feedback we've gotten tonight, you know, a special use permit will, will certainly involve, there'll be, you know, public, opportunities for public input, there'll very likely, my understanding is there, there will be a hearing in front of the planning commission, there will be many more steps before a site is finalized, where the, the community can weigh in. I want to just comment for a moment on the broader picture of, of this. I mean, I'm, I'm really appreciative that this is moving forward. I think this is incredibly important. You know, I did have an opportunity, as Counselor Matt Guerrero alluded to, to tour a pallet home facility in Denver. And here's, here's an important fact about, about these temporary sleeping unit communities, including pallet homes. They've consistently been found to reduce crime in the neighborhoods where they're installed. In LA, in 2020 to 2021, while overall during that year, crime rose about 25%, in the areas within a quarter mile of the 10 pallet villages that were installed, crime decreased by 25%. In Denver, between 2020 and 2021, whereas Denver crime in 2020 to 2021, there was a spike throughout, you know, America, including in Denver, crime went up 14%. But in the safe outdoor space where pallet homes were installed, crime went down 3%. And Vancouver found a similar effect. I've heard, what, what I've heard in talking to neighbors around here, I mean, I've talked to neighbors in Denver who've, who've seen pallet homes, a lot of them were opposed when they went in, but guess what? They're really happy, you know why? Because these folks are actually out doing daywork, in many cases, which means they're cleaning up, you know, trash and pollution, and they're earning some wages while they do it. These are not unplanned communities, these are planned communities. There's staff in place that specialize in providing services and supports, and these are really well-run. I mean, these are like staff-intensive, well-run facilities. And the decrease in crime totally makes sense, because of course, if you move someone from off of a, you know, out of a park or off a street corner, into a planned temporary sleeping unit like this, you're going to help stabilize them. And the data overwhelmingly supports this. It, it does, I, I so appreciate the comments that we've heard, I also appreciate the many comments in support of this ordinance on Lakewood Speaks. It does bother me a little bit when, when folks, you know, say, "Well, we don't want any, any, any pallet homes, or we don't want temporary shelters." Because we also hear from folks across the community, including the same voices and many others, that they also have concerns about unsheltered, unhoused folks sleeping in parks, sleeping on sidewalks, sleeping in front of local businesses. I share those concerns, I don't, I think we need to be a compassionate community where folks aren't sleeping on the streets. And so creating a dedicated option where people can be is an incredibly important part of our strategy. It's, it's really good progress that we now have a navigation center that's serving folks, but one of the things we're hearing from everyone involved in that process is, "That's great, but where do folks go after a week or two?" The grant that the city's pulled down from the state that will retrofit recovery works to have dedicated temporary sleeping facilities will help, but boy, getting some pallet homes or something similar in Lakewood in a dedicated planned way that could serve... way that could serve folks, so that they can actually move from the navigation center and be stabilized and get a job and get their, and you know, get, get clean when they need to, right? Some, you know, get sober if that's an issue, get mental health services if that's what they need. The housing has to come first. And folks, this is a good strategic way to use it. You do it. The city is doing everything right in terms of planning this and doing this in a planful way. I can't emphasize enough how important I think this is, how excited I am to see this move forward. And my only feedback for staff is I want us to go as fast as we can. You know, we're gonna go, and of course, we want to have community input, but I want us to be in a place as soon as possible where we're able to actually offer this as a resource, because we need it. Homelessness is going up by a lot across the metro region. This is a desperate need. It's, I'm thrilled this is being prioritized and I hope we can move with community input without rushing it, but you know, we've already heard that we don't have it in the 2025 budget. So I would like us to move as fast as, as expeditiously possible beyond that to get this in place. Thank you very much.
Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. Hard act to follow. So, I'm so excited about the wording of this amendment. And so all we're doing here is allowing the municipal code, the municipal code to allow sleeping units that are part of a city-approved transitional housing program. So, city-approved. So, city has to approve it. And who's the city? It's not just us, it's not just staff, it's, it's the people. And, and for the naysayers, let me just ask a clarifying question. Do you ever foresee a time when the city would approve the, this transitional housing to be placed on parks or in open space? Anyone can answer that. Could, could this, could these sleeping units then be put in a park or in open space as maybe a comment alluded to?
There are a lot of.
Wait, we're, I'm sorry, we're not having a dialogue here. Counselor Sinks, if you could just continue. No, 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 thank you. Thank you. No one has answered that yet, so.
There are a lot of restrictions already in place on the use of parks and open space.
Right. So there's no possibility that any city-approved transitional housing program could be put on park or open space? Because there's so many restrictions that govern that. So I just wanted to be very clear that there's nothing in place. We know where they're not going. We know that these sleeping units are not going into parks and open space. And do we know where they're going? No, the city hasn't decided that yet. And so that will be further, further conversations, as we've said. And again, the only thing that we're approving is that we're going to allow these sleeping units in, in a transitional housing program. And so that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Can I make it very clear that our parks, there's not residential use allowed on our parks in open space? So I need to make that really clear. That's not allowed, period. Hard stop.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank my colleagues for lots of thoughtful questions that have answered things that were on my mind. And also to staff for the great presentation, as well as all of your work on putting this together. I just wanted to ask one question and then make a comment or two. So in the way that this is currently worded, since it says city-approved program, let's say an interested faith community or nonprofit provider were interested in bringing this type of community to the, to their space, would in how the ordinance is now phrased, that be allowed to be a city-approved sheltering facility or sheltering community?
So that particular portion is not exactly identified right now. Again, the reason that we put in there that we wanted to make sure it was city-approved is so that the city, and by that I mean all the departments, planning, engineering, building, sustainability, everybody has a chance to look over this entire process. Most likely, as was mentioned, the people that run these types of facilities are trained staff, right? There's also going to be some component to a city-approved facility that regulates what that training is, what services they provide, how they provide it, all of the rules and everything that goes into what a facilitator provides on the site. That's what a program needs to be and that's what needs to be approved. That's how the building department can assure that things like regular maintenance, like inspections and things like that that are needed are actually going to be taken care of. That's really the intent of putting that phrase in there.
Thank you, yeah. And I think that that definitely makes sense, because, you know, as folks were mentioning, it is of utmost importance, right, that these communities are safe, thoughtful, well-maintained for our neighbors. So really appreciate all of the thought that has gone into that. And I think that that phrase, city-approved, makes a lot of sense personally. And then before I turn off my mic, I wanted to say that I have also been to some of the sites where there has been relocatable shelters, as we're calling them neutrally. And I even had the privilege of giving like a bike mechanic class in there, because a lot of folks use bikes to get around. And I think it was just really humbling to me to see the impact that those shelter spaces could have on people's trajectory and in the level of safety and comfort that really allows people to get that leg up. And I think some of the, you know, stories that we've heard tonight really enumerate what the human cost of not having programs like this are. And so I really appreciate folks for sharing that. And, you know, I totally, I want this, I want them to be safe, I want this to be community-informed, I want it to make sense, but I just would also like to express my personal, my opinion that this should be as, as streamlined of a process as possible, with as few veto points as possible, so that we have this, that, you know, this resource for our community. And as, you know, I have said to people in emails who have written to me about this, I would be more than happy to have this next door to me and I really hope that something like this can, can be built in my community soon.
Thank you. Hey, yeah, please, I'm going to call this meeting to order, no talking. Counselor Ryan, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My question is, I want to start broadly picking up a little something that Counselor Lo was getting at, and then look at a little bit of the language in the proposed ordinance and then come back at a big picture again, just to give you a little guidepost, if we may. So going to Counselor Lo's, what is the next steps? My understanding, one of the next steps is that staff is going to come back to city council with hopefully some more of a framework to answer some of the questions that we don't have the answers to. For example, is it a special use permit? Where's it going to be? How is it going to be run? Who's it going to be serving? All those types of different questions and that are still unknown. It's my understanding that you'll come back to us with another ask for some, either ordinance changes or some other changes, putting aside the acquisition of property and such. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe planning will be in front of you with those informations.
Okay. And going a little bit to the language, if I may, and of course, my computer timed out here. The piece that's, we already have a definition of sleeping units. The addition that you're proposing is simply to allow the accessory, or the ancillary units such as the bathrooms, mobile units, water tanks, those types of things, right?
Yes, so simply there's two things. In the change of the definition, what we're really trying to do is, is identify that there's a difference in the sleeping unit that may be used for commercial purposes and sleeping units that may be used for transitional housing. In the second piece, we're identifying which part of the criteria that we want to be able to apply. And we, we're looking to apply things, specifics from other sections of the code, but realizing that because these are such specialized construction types, that they may not meet every single aspect of one section of the code, but the overall goal is to provide safety in all aspects.
And I think you're referring to on page nine of our material 3101, or 3103.111 conformance, in the existing language already says that temporary structures and uses shall conform to the structural strength, fire safety, means of egress, accessibility, light, ventilation and sanitary requirements. And in the definition that you're adding, you're specifically tying those two things together as saying that there's temporary structures. So we're not completely throwing away the code, there's still very rigorous standards that are going to be applied to these.
Yes.
And the, the language that you're adding in that section I just referred to, the phrases, the city of Lakewood Transitional Housing Program, that's not defined anywhere in the code as amended or not, correct?
That's correct.
But the intention of using the phrase, city of Lakewood Transitional Housing Program, is that the city will either own or control the housing program?
Yes, we want to make sure that the city has oversight and participation in putting together all the elements that are needed to make a full and complete project.
So if a city does go forward with one of these projects, it's always going to have skin in the game, so to speak.
Correct.
And, and just to let city council know, I'm going to propose an amendment that will define city of Lakewood Transitional Housing Program to pick up that very aspect, so that there's absolutely no ambiguity, that the city is always going to have skin in the game on this. But we'll discuss that in a moment later. The, nothing in this ordinance addresses permitting, changes zoning, correct?
No, we're not making any changes to permitting. As we review structures, all structures in Lakewood require permits, with very few exceptions for some small types of items. But we very much want these to be permitted, so that we can ensure that things like those electrical hookups are done safely, to make sure that the equipment functions, to make sure that they can withstand the wind loads, pallet structures again have tie-downs. We need to ensure that all that stuff is done properly to make sure that these are safe.
And I was reminded in a previous meeting, and sometimes it bears repeating a finer point, and so I'd like to make sure that we're abundantly clear. The city, even if there is a city council that was silly enough to try and locate any kind of housing on open space or parks, it cannot legally do so.
That is accurate. You cannot legally do that.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and amend, or make a motion to amend the, the proposed ordinance on page nine, where we have 3103.111 at the end of that section, to add the following language. A city of Lakewood Transitional Housing Program is one in which a city of Lakewood owns the program, open pran, in whole or in part, closed pran, controls the program or both. And I'll just say that I've talked to the city staff about this and I believe it meets the intention of what is being proposed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Actually, let's wait just a minute, I need to write names down previously, desire to speak. All right, I've got several people with hands up to speak, but I don't know that that's on the amendment. Is there anyone that wants to speak specifically to the amendment? Okay, Counselor Stewart, then Counselor Matt Guerrero, then Counselor Cruz. Yep, you want, you want to do it? Okay. Start with Sharazai first.
Thank you. I feel like this contradicts what Counselor Cruz just asked, and so I would refer to the example I'm most familiar with, which is Denver. I work at a nonprofit that is one block away from a pallet shelter village, and that's owned, that's operated by the Tiny Home Collaborative. And so I'm concerned that this wordsmithing would restrict us to being like the owner and operator of these sites, when we should be, in many cases, like subcontracting to people who have that experience. And so I feel like I heard a question being asked from Counselor Cruz that we would potentially have a subcontractor relationship, but then it seems like Counselor Ryan's implying that this is reinforcing a point he heard from staff. So I would just love a little clarity on that.
I guess that's for you to debate, but I, I feel like those two things are congruent. I don't feel like they're, it doesn't sound to me like they are in conflict. I think the point is that to be part of, as it's worded here, to be part of a transitional housing program, I believe implies city participation. I think Counselor Ryan's comment, as he, as he articulated it to me on Friday, was to ensure that that's a true statement.
I think where I'm getting stuck in the amendment, though, is the owned and complete or part. So does that then, and I guess this may be a question for legals, like if we subcontract, is that possible? Because we've put a very explicit language in here about ownership completely or in part.
So as, as I read the proposed language in this amendment, there is a provision for ownership in whole or in part. However, there is also the, the ability for the city to have control. So if we don't have ownership, we would have to have control of the, the program. So I don't see this amendment as requiring ownership by the city, either in whole or in part, as long as the city does have control.
But if it is a faith-based community that decides that they want to do this, then how would they get approval if we have no ownership or control over how they use their property?
Well, the control would have to be in the, the city giving approval over the design plan. So we would have the final say in what the setup's going to be like, to make sure things like fire trucks, other emergency vehicles, police vehicles can get in there, to make sure that they're set up in a safe manner, that they have the necessary support structures, not only to keep people living safely, but to give them the ability to move forward to the next step of permanent housing. So the control comes from the permitting process and all of the other oversight that the Public Works Department, and I assume the Planning Department would, would oversee.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you.
Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I believe Counselor Stewart had, was on the list for, no?
You guys decide.
Great. I'm going to go. I'm so sorry, I think you sat down prematurely, because I have basically similar questions around this, which is that, yeah, I think that this, this idea of, I think, I think some of my questions on this has to do with, is this, is that something that we normally put in building code? Like, to me, this feels like the discussion that is for the special permit process, or for if we end up having, like a particular program through which we are permitting, right? And less for building code? But I haven't actually interacted with our building code beyond, like development menus, sustainability things, and then like updates to our building codes. So I think that this is something where, this feels like something that's sort of like dictating how a program works, which is not really what I associate with a building code. I associate building code with like how these things must be built for like the safety and the environment and the town. And then there's zoning and permitting as all separate processes that work together to make it make sense.
Yeah, so I, I think that you, you are correct, that this would be a little unusual in a zoning code, but it's also important to realize, this is an exception to the zoning code for a local amendment to the zoning code. So while it may not be reflective of the International Building Code in and of itself, or of many of the other. or of many of the other already currently existing local exemptions, it isn't completely unusual to see in an exception, but I would have to look to the, the building official. I don't believe this is typically in, in a building code, but again, we are exempting this section. So, and beyond that, it really is a policy question that, that I can't speak to. I can just tell you that, yes, this is a little bit different than what we normally see in a building code.
I, I, I'm struggling with this, because I, I think that your point is well taken, that like we need Lakewood as a city to be, to some end, like more involved in this kind of property use. I think that for me, given that we don't really know how those other aspects might end up working out, and how much we're going to want to rely on private actors, I, I even think about our codes when it comes to group homes, which I know is also something that can be really contentious and difficult, but that the way that we permit group homes does not, there's like specific requirements about the, the types of organizations and entities and companies that are allowed to do them and apply, and then there's permitting processes for them, that allow like them to be exempt within places that were otherwise, you know, a single-family restricted, but that then, that those processes are like, are, are how that works. And I, there's not, I mean, I reread it, I should have flagged this earlier, apologies, I did it this afternoon. The, the, the group home, like process, and it, it doesn't, it's not in the building code. So, to me, that's like almost more synonymous, is, is like, I could see it working like that, where we have very little to do with the property. I think there's also probably more likely that we are collaborators or participants in, in a really big way, but I don't want to inhibit our ability to have like private actors take more, like ownership and catalyze the expansion of this kind of program. I don't know if that's quite, if anything I said was really wrong, please let me know. I'm just reasoning into the mic, because I struggle with this.
I apologize, I didn't mean to speak over you there. I can't speak to the specifics of the group home requirements off the top of my head, but I will just say this. It is, not, I use the word unusual, because it's not seen in other areas of the building code to say that it has to be part of a City of Lakewood program. So it's already a bit unusual to have that exemption in there, because the building code doesn't work for this type of, I almost said housing unit, but really sleeping unit. So it's really, it's up to council as a policy decision to see, to say how, how far away from the usual you want to go in this building code. And I'm afraid I don't have a, a great response to, to the thoughtful question that you posed. It really, to me, it does sound a lot like a, a policy question that I don't have a great answer for you on.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilor Stewart.
Thank you. I had similar questions. So just to confirm, since I am not a lawyer, the word "control" legally means input.
So the, the word "control" obviously is not defined in this ordinance either, so we would go generally to the dictionary to see what it means there. I don't have the dictionary in front of me right now. I can, I can Google it, if that would be, if that would be helpful, but I would mean, I would generally take it to mean that we determine how something operates, that the city is the ultimate, has the ultimate veto power, so to speak, of something. That's what I view control as.
Okay, that's, that is helpful, and also so a legal definition, I think, if anybody wants to get one, because I think that very much changes the nature of this amendment pretty significantly.
If I could add something to that, maybe, maybe this would be helpful. Another, rather than, if there's concern about the way the amendment has been stated, maybe another way to consider that is, the language as it's written does talk about it's part of a transitional housing program. So maybe separately, you could say, back to our, our planning staff, that you would want to see what this transitional housing program looks like. And that's, that's maybe another way to get to the same thing.
That, yeah, that's kind of my question, and I think Councilor Maia Guerrero was asking a similar question around, I agree with Councilor Ryan's idea that we need this somewhere, clearly. But I'm curious, because it sounds like we're going to start getting some more things on our agenda around this, and again, going back to SafeLodge, which I think is kind of a nice comparison. We had to create, we had to have a resolution around what types of elements need to be in a program that then gets approved by the City of Lakewood, and I'm just curious if that is actually the space for something like this. Because the code as written does already say, to your point, "City of Lakewood Transitional Housing Program," and so is it best to define what that is in this particular code, or is it best to actually define it as part of the program approval process, that someone will, a nonprofit, a religious organization, a service provider is inevitably going to have to go through to get to the point of being able to get approval to start a project like this, I imagine? Like, we know that there are next steps, so I guess that's my wondering.
And a, a very good question, again. A lot of it does come back to a policy determination of, of what this council wants to do. However, what I can say about the current process and my discussions with planning staff is that this would likely take, in the current zoning code, which I know that you will be seeing a rewrite of that at some point in the near future, but in the current zoning code, it would be under the shelter use designation, and shelter use is only allowed in three different zone districts. So the area would have to fall in there, and they would have to go for a special use permit, which will go to the Planning Commission, will have a full public hearing, and so there will be oversight there. And throughout that process, it will allow the city to build out what this program looks like, what, what the requirements are, what the minimum requirements are, what we definitely need to see. So it, it could be built out later, certainly, and I do believe that is the intent of staff, is to get this ordinance, which is just a, a small piece of a much larger puzzle, put into place, and then later, we would, we would determine exactly what we want to see in this. And part of that would likely be based on the type of units that, that are chosen, because that's going to drive for what we're here tonight, what, what building code amendments, we can say, okay, this, this can't apply specifically. So, like I said, again, small piece of a large puzzle, and the, the goal is to have the city have complete oversight over this in some way, shape, or form. Do we have that in front of you tonight? No. Is it anticipated to bring it in the future, in some way, shape, or form? Yes.
Okay, thanks. Councilor Cruz.
Thank you, and thank you to staff for fielding our questions on this. So my, my question, I'm not totally sure how to procedurally do this, is perhaps for the carrier of the amendment, with regard to like the, whether this is, feels necessary to move forward in this capacity, or in kind of a future conversation. I, I personally think it makes most sense to have it in kind of more of a programatics conversation, rather than the building code conversation. And so that's my number one, number one question, but if, if we need to move forward with this for a level of comfort, I'm open to that, and have a potential phrasing change suggestion.
I think it makes little sense to try and define a term in later programming, "We're amending the building code." We're putting in a brand-new term that doesn't exist in the building code. You can read all three volumes of the building code, and you will never find any of these phrases. To council's point, we're adding something, we're trying to amend the building code, to add something that the building code does not even contemplate, other than the phrase "temporary structures." I saw in both the definition of sleeping unit, and in this exemption section, the phrase "City of Lakewood Transitional Housing Program." The question I asked staff was, what does that mean? The response was, that means something that the city is involved in. The city has control or ownership, and so I, so that's where this amendment sprung up from. I think we would be ill-served to move forward with amending a building code, and having an undefined term that we are left people to guess what that means. And for us to kind of play loosey-goosey with it, I think is also a little advised. So that's why, that's, that's where that request comes from. You know, if, if there is a situation where we need to be more expansive somehow, then by all means, let's change it to be more expansive. But I don't think we should sit here and guess what infinite possibilities might possibly arise, when the most logical thing and the, and the thing that we want to move forward is a city program. And so I want to make sure that we give comfort to folks who are trying to understand what this means, and to move forward in, in a very logical way.
Did that answer your question?
Okay. Am I allowed to give my amendment?
Sure.
Okay. I then potentially proposes what I would hope would be seen as a friendly amendment. And I do thank you, the, thank you for, for putting this in here, and I understand the definitional clarity, and I, and I see where you're coming from on that. Rather than "controls," which I understand maybe from a legal definition, means something to me, I think approves the program might, would make me feel better about supporting this, and is what I think a lot of my colleagues have been speaking to as well.
What about oversight?
I, to me, based on the, on the models that, that I've seen, I don't think, I think that if we put the parameters in place, that's fine, and if, if it's working fine, like, I just don't want it to seem like we have to be the, the sole proprietor and controller of all of these programs, when it's been shown, when we've made programs too bureaucratically onerous, like our safe parking program, we have one, and we don't have anymore, right? And so I think that there's real concern with creating too many barriers in how we're doing this. And I think approves, to me, gets at the heart of what you're looking at, rather than picking another word. So that's the word that I would put out there, and understand if, if that's not a friendly amendment to you.
I'll accept the amendment.
All right, then we shall move to Councilor Nystrom.
Okay, my comment is not specific to the amendment. Do you have a question for that purpose?
Yes.
Okay, then he can go first.
Okay.
Councilor Ryan, as always, appreciate your legal eagle eye on, on, on this, and I, I totally support the spirit in which this is offered. I, I'm just looking at the, sort of the ordinance itself, and I'm noticing that there's a part on, on page, on page five, where it says, that a part of a Lakewood, a City of Lakewood approved transitional housing program shall be considered temporary structures. So I guess to me, I, I share the concern that, here's my, here's my just legitimate, good, very sincere concern. If, I, I think Councilor Cruz has a very good point, and Councilor Stewart makes a good point, that given that the word "controls" has some squish in it, I just wouldn't want to create a situation where we're sort of creating an opportunity for a set of legal challenges to a transitional housing program by the vagueness of the term "controls," right? So if, if in fact we subcontract with, let's say, pallet homes, or some other, or some faith-based nonprofit provider, right? And the question arises, when we issue an RFP, and then someone, some other NGO or nonprofit is operating this, does the City of Lakewood control it? I just, I really don't think we want to open ourselves, so I appreciate what you're trying to do here, but, but that's my concern about "controls." So I think "approved" makes sense, but then that leads me to my natural question of, isn't it, aren't we already covered by the fact that it says, as part of this amendment, "A City of Lakewood Approved Transitional Housing Program"? I mean, to me, that kind of gets at the, the thrust of what we're after here, which is approval.
Yeah, but in 3103.11, there's no reference to "approve," and so the reason I was willing to accept the friendly amendment, if you will, is it becomes, the language at least is a little bit more consistent with the definition of sleeping unit, even though I, you know, I'm, I'm a little leery to, to, to be agreeable on this, but I can read the tea leaves, and I, and I think that's the, the best compromise for all of us on, on this issue.
All right, that makes sense, and in the spirit of consistency, I would support the change to "approved," so that it sort of says "approved" in, in several places. And thank you for your, for your nimbleness.
Yeah, and I would say I'm also in agreement with the friendly amendment, so, just, maybe I'm a little slow on the, on the draw tonight, but, you know, having read the comments on Lakewood Speaks, and listening to the comments from people that took the time to come here tonight, I just want to, like, let's ground this, folks. There, there really isn't anything specific going on. We're trying to plan for a future opportunity to address this problem. You know, as several people have stated, we have a homelessness problem across this country, we also have it in Lakewood, we have a responsibility to take care of our citizens. Many of these types of communities have been deployed already across the country. I saw one down near Colorado Springs last week, I drove through it, it's very well-maintained, it's very clean, and it's been very productive for people that are using this as a transition point. And, and I would encourage people that are skeptical about that, to please do some research. It doesn't take a lot of time, simple Google search, and as Councilor Lowe referenced, communities are safer and cleaner and more amenable when people are not living on the streets. And the people that are living on the streets need our help in some capacity. You know, six to 10% of the US population are veterans, but 13% of the homeless population are veterans. So think about that. You know, everybody's really quick to say, "Thank you for your service." Well, this is a way to thank people for their service, okay? There are many people in our society today, including seniors, families with children, that are one paycheck away from being homeless. And all I would say is, walk a mile in their shoes. Think about that before you start pushing back against something that's not happening yet. You know, if we, if we're not doing our jobs, if we're not planning for these scenarios, and so, please do some research, and consider being a little bit more compassionate for those that are less fortunate. You don't know the reasons that some of these people are on the streets, it's not all because they're drug addicts. And even those, those that are drug addicts are maybe in that situation because of some other, you know, tragedy that has befallen them, or something that's happened to them. So, you know, I would just ask you to open your minds and your hearts when you consider these types of opportunities, and the things that we are able and could be doing for our homeless population here in Lakewood. Thank you.
Councilor Sings.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate the, the friendly, the agreement to the friendly amendment, I was also having some issues with that, so I love the city approved, which is really good, because then we can have that oversight without pulling all the strings. In other words, so I also visited Pallet Shelter Structure, 38th and Peoria in Denver, and I was so impressed there with the woman, the resident, the woman that, especially one woman, was in charge. And to Councilor Nystrom's point about drugs and so forth, so this, this woman that's in control, that's leading all of the requirements for that structure, she's like, nope, they can't do drugs here. They do drugs, they're out. And, and so it's very, very tight, and people love the structure, and, and there is indeed a lot of control, and, and it's wonderful that we can put this ball in motion, because as, as I talked to hundreds of people last year, people are concerned about the homeless on the streets. And, and so I'm thinking of the community, as, as we set aside this place for transitional housing, and get the tents off the streets, and, and let them have this secure, safe place with structure until they can go into permanent housing. So... So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beer.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I wasn't planning on speaking, but everybody's made so many great eloquent points, I just had to throw, you know, throw my own spin on it. I appreciated hearing it from everybody. I try to listen at least twice as much as I speak, so usually I'm just hearing from all of you and getting some good insights. So I appreciate everybody and their willingness to publicly share their perspective, and I think I would like to do that as well. Happy to support our amendment that we're talking about, but I just also thought I would share that, you know, before moving to Ward Five, I lived in Ward Two and saw the homelessness issue daily, and fought hard for my first term on council to really try to get the city activated and trying to help address the problem. And so I'm glad that we're, you know, taking steps to try to address this issue. The challenge is half, you know, at least half of our city is basically zoned R1, right? And it's really challenging when you have to have really strict minimum density standards, expansive lots. It's really challenging to really be able to address the affordable housing crisis, but also address the tertiary effects of that, which is the homelessness effect. So this, to me, is really about starting to take a look at what we can do within the building code to make sure that we have the ability, if we can identify places that make sense, to help address this issue. And just, I'll quit opining there, but just on a personal note, you know, my father was murdered when I was 16 years old, and I had social security for two years to keep me afloat, and I had my own apartment. And when I was 18, my social security ran out, and I was homeless. And so I don't share that story very often, because I just don't even think about it. I'm like a world away from that now. But I put myself through college, and I was able to get out of that, living in hotels and at friends' houses and in my car, because I got Pell Grants and I got student loans. I was able to go to college, and then pay for my apartment with my student loans. So it's been a long time since then, and, but homelessness is certainly something that I'm, you know, really passionate about making sure that we can take steps to really address. And the least we could do, really, is try to deregulate in certain areas, in certain, you know, ways throughout the city, to be able to find opportunities to help address and solve the issue. So I appreciate everyone's courage, talking about their own personal experiences, talking about their experiences with veterans, and, you know, it's really sort of nice to hear. So anyway, I'll quit talking, but I just, thinking a lot about it, and it's really, kind of, this conversation's taken me back to some of those days. So looking forward to supporting this, and looking forward to working with the community. This is really about, you know, I live right behind a park, right? I live in a nice, beautiful neighborhood, and I want to see it, that beautiful neighborhood upheld. I don't want to see it denigrated. But right now, the law's worked the other way, where if people want to take up residency there, and, you know, we don't have a whole lot of tools to address that, but one tool we do have is to try to provide housing, or at least deregulate in certain ways to help allow for housing to be built, so that way people can have a place to occupy that's not just a park. And we see this a lot in my old neighborhood, and, you know, near Mole Home, and, anyway. So just wanted to share that. Thanks.
All right. And before we move on to vote on our amendment and then the ordinance, I will just briefly say a huge thank you to all of our members on our Housing Policy Commission. This year, for the most part, we did some of these conversations prior to this year, but really, there's been a lot of hard work on the part of that committee, on the part of broader council, as well as staff. Thank you all for the help that you guys have contributed to our conversations, as we are working very, very hard to try to create tools, as Counselor Beer mentioned, to address homelessness and affordability of housing, so that we do have the ability to clear the spaces on our streets and in our parks that are being used in a wrong way, and be able to provide roofs over heads that can help people get back on the path to self-sufficiency. So thank you, everybody, for everything that you've done, and, you know, we do receive emails daily about addressing items like public safety and homelessness. And I stand up here tonight resolute in the decision that our decision to make this evening tonight really aligns with our efforts to try to make things safer for our community, and also to try to provide opportunities so that we don't have to have our parks with encampments that are creating dangerous situations for everybody involved. So with that, I will go ahead and first ask for a vote on the amendment with the friendly amendment. And we did, yes, we had a second, so if we could first vote on that. This was changing the verbiage to approved. All right, and that passes 11 yeas and 10 nays. Okay, so that was the vote on the amendment to the item. Now we are voting on the original motion as amended.
Can we clear?
Okay. All right. We are going to start voting again. All right, and that passes 10 yeas, 1 nay, the nay being Counselor Oliver. Thank you, everybody. So this is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the City Council on items that did not appear on this evening's agenda. One comment I'll make, that the goal of public comment is to create an environment that welcomes all stakeholders to share their thoughts and concerns. The purpose of this time is for us to hear from you. This is a listen-only session. If you'd like to engage with a conversation with your council staff or myself, you may do so via phone, scheduled office visits, or an email. For anyone that is attending virtually, you can, again, submit comments on LakewoodSpeaks.org. That will be open through 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. For those of you that are in public or in person this evening and would like to make comments, I do ask that you observe the decorum of council chambers, the respect for the meeting, and refrain from applause or audible support or discord with the speaker or council. Again, we want to make this an open environment and a welcoming environment for everyone to stand up and say their piece. If you have any handouts for council, please provide those directly to our Assistant City Clerk, and they will be distributed to council following this evening's meeting. I will now call the names signed up for public comment. If you have not signed up to speak, then please see the Assistant Deputy City Clerk to sign in. And with that, we'll get started with Mr. James Mace, and then we've got Mr. James Bunch. And as you approach, I'll ask if you give us your name and address, or name and ward, and we'll get the clock started for you for three minutes.
Go ahead and cancel the project, please. Cancel it. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. James Mace, Ward One. I'm here tonight, again, to ask a couple of clarifying questions and make a couple of clarifying points. The other day, I was down at our police department, and I did not know that the police department closes at 5:00. Mayor, I guess my questions are for you. What in the blue blank is going on? Because I am, I had to charge my chair outside. I had to wait for at least two agents. They could not let me in the building. That is a public safety building. What is going on, and why is it closed? Monday through Friday, it is open from 7:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon, when everything closes. And I have also made it clear, and I'm going to make it clear to council, if I do not hear to figure out what's going on, two agents told me it closes at 5:00. Now, bottom line is, I'm putting this on YouTube, because this is a public safety building, and it needs to stay open 24 hours. What is going on? And I am not, I expect an answer within 24 hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mace.
Mayor, members of the council and the staff. I just, I've sent emails to Board Three and Board Four people. My name is Jim Bunch. I live at 9292 West Texas Drive, and I drive, I drive Garrison both ways several times a day. And I just wanted to, as I mentioned to them, I think you've got kind of a mess there. If you go to that intersection of Florida, and it's very, very confusing, and that needs to be addressed. Plus, I think it's going to be unsightly. Those things are already being fallen apart. I don't, I drive it every day, and there's several poles already falling apart. So I think, I don't, I don't know how well this was planned. I, as a homeowner, was never contacted, because I think this is significant. And the other question I want, I mean, the other thing I wanted to make, if you go down to Iowa to Jewell, you've got people parking in the street. And how can, you guys are the council people, you have to represent them. Those homes, I think, are devalued a little, because a prospective buyer is going to come, and is going to say, "This is problematic. I don't want to buy this." So I mean, you guys are talking about protecting homeowners and constituents, and I think you need to do that, and you need to start right there. Those folks from Iowa down to about Jewell, those people, when that snowplow comes, they're going to pile that snow on those cars, and it isn't going to be fun. And then they have to walk a car's length. So I think that's something that I've come to ask you tonight, at least help those folks out. It's, you know, as a responsible representative of the city, I think, yeah, but an obligation to make, to make, to do no harm, and to not unnecessarily mess with your constituents. And I think what you've done on Garrison, you've done a little bit of both of that. I think you've harmed a few people, and I think you made the whole thing look pretty messy. Now, I know, I know, I do appreciate the replies I got from two of you that I sent to my ward, and I appreciate that. And I got 42 seconds, and I'm going to finish. But I'm just saying, I think you really do need to help those people whose cars are out in the street, and don't let them get that snow pushed on them, because it won't be good. And I appreciate anything you can do, and I will look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Bonnie Seraphine, and then Connie Reddick.
Nice to see you. I'm Bonnie Seraphine. I'm in Ward One. Jesslyn's familiar with me. Wendy's familiar with me, and so is Glenda. Hi, Glenda. I live on Estes Street between 13th and 14th. You all know it, you know it well. The Garrison Station's there, the James Ritchie Park is there, the Action Center's there, and just a few blocks from that is your Recovery Center. I can't walk to the grocery store. I can't ride my bike around my neighborhood from all the drugs. And you all sit here with all this enthusiasm to help the homeless. I'm not an uncompassionate person. I have compassion. Help those that want to help themselves. Drug addicts are not housing insecure. Yes, they live on my street, and they endanger me every single day. I can't go and dump my garbage without this, okay? I can't dump my garbage. It's literally 20 feet from my house, because I have to carry mace. Today marked the third time, not the second, I was a little upset when I called you today, the third time in less than three months my life has been threatened. Three times. Do you guys get threatened every day in your neighborhood? Do you have to carry mace, dump your garbage? I doubt it. The police are familiar with this. Every time myself and my other neighbors contact them, we're the criminals. Those of us that have worked hard all of our lives, and paid for a place, and pay our taxes, and we're the criminal. Aw, but they're homeless. Today, the police officer, when I called dispatch, they said, "Do you want to press charges?" And I said, "Absolutely." These people, five of them, said they were going to knock me off my bike, beat me to death, and then kill me, which was both the same thing. They asked if I wanted to press charges. I said, "Yes." No one came. They told me to wait in the Action Center in the parking lot. I did, for 15 minutes, while they all dispersed and harassed me on their way out of town, wherever they were headed. And then when the cops finally got there, after I called 911 the second time, three officers show up in three different $250,000 vehicles and go, "What do you expect us to do?" That was the response after they interrogated me, the victim. It was, "What do you want us to do?" This is crap. You guys know it. The police aren't doing anything. You guys have an ordinance sign. Ordinance 9.66.010. It's got the City of Lakewood written on it, and it says, "No trespassing," in giant letters. It's down to a ravine. It also backs up to a derelict property that has drug dens on it. That's all they do. They go back there and smoke their crack and smoke their meth. That's what they do. I know it for a fact. I'm not just making it up to be mean to homeless people. This is a dangerous little corridor. It's a simple fix, folks, and it doesn't take $250,000 SUVs to fix it. How about you put a couple of e-bike cops out there? They could ride between Garrison and Carr Street and 13th and 14th and be busy 24 hours a day. 24 hours a day, they would be dealing with crime.
Ms. Seraphine, your time is up.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Reddick.
I want to bring up the fact about you saying you are, first, I want to say to Rebecca Stewart and Roger Low, which is in my ward. Yous are so concerned about the homeless, but you can't even take care of what? I'm not a citizen. I'm not a person that you should have compassion for. And you say also, Paula, that everybody should investigate. It just takes a little time to look into things. It's been since 2017 that I have had problems with electricity, and also not having air conditioning, also not having a refrigerator. And then, oh, they talk about changing the laws for the homelessness, for the houses about the garage. When you don't have exhaust, and you, and that's one of the codes, when you don't have exhaust, and I'm living in an apartment that's tax credit and also federally funded, Section 8, and you don't have exhaust, and they say they're cleaning the garage, and everybody has to get off, and the fire alarms are going off and everything, because we don't, we have no way to get all of the cars' combustion coming in there that is gonna kill everybody. And yet you want to pass ordinances and say, oh, let's go, hey, you went and passed a law for, for their codes, when that is detrimental to their lives. You haven't cared about my life. My husband was in the military. Did you say, oh, poor Ms. Reddick. She's living in an unconditional living area that's unsafe, that's killing her, where feces and rugs and the lady's intestines explode. But that's not enough to clean it out. Or it's not enough to not, the doctors have wrote letters and letters about everything. You have those letters in your files, but do you have any compassion for me? My husband was in the service. He took care of your lives. But do you care about me? I, I'm a citizen. I was born here. I don't know where all of you came from, but my family has paid taxes. We're indigenous. They've stolen our land. Well, what about me? But you're, you're concerned about the homeless. But we are gonna be the homeless when our houses explode with fires and everything, because it's not safe. It didn't even pass HUD's regulations. And so what have you been, all of yous are over, and it's not funny. It's not funny, Wendy. You are over, you, you are over the commissioners, which you's wanted to be over the commissioners, and you are not abiding by the laws. Several laws have been-
Your time is expired, Ms. Reddick.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But I want you to check the laws and you, the responsibilities you have. And please have some compassion for me.
Thank you. Ms. Fiore, do we have more signups?
We do. Amber Varwig, I believe. Followed by Brad Bruce.
Okay, you can hear me. Amber Varwig, Ward Two. Wanted to thank you for listening to me earlier. And so I wanted to invite you guys to my feed. And I've never done this to you guys, because, well, that's not really the vibe most of the time. But it occurs to me. We're talking about safety. We're talking about people as though, like, en masse. Homeless people are just, you know, going around with machetes, doing like Suicide Squad. I don't know that I've seen that personally. I've seen people be pretty messed up on drugs. I mean, I live in Ward Two. I've seen that. And they don't have any, any resources and stuff, so. I try to provide that, and my group does. And I think it might be good for you guys to gather apart, to come and see us. And you don't have to do anything. I'm not asking you to make promises. You don't have to tell them who you are. You can do it anonymous. The point is, I'd like you to listen to what they talk about. I don't want you to necessarily ask anything leading or anything else. Just listen to what they talk about. Listen to what their hopes and dreams are, because they talk about that a lot. They, they have small things like, oh, I'd like to replace my speaker, because it's all I really have at night, all the way up to, oh, man, I think I might get a chance to get this apartment, and then I can get my kids back. Because every Friday, we're sitting there. We don't just like, you can take one, you know, like, that's not what we do. If you're living out of a backpack and you want seven sandwiches, I think you need seven sandwiches. And that's how I do my thing. I do it based out of dignity, because I believe if you treat adults like adults, they will act like adults. And I, I'm not very large. I'm not very intimidating. I don't think anybody here would think like, oh, I'd never want to meet her in a dark alley I'd go down. But I walked down Colfax, 3:00 in the morning to go to 7-Eleven, because, because I treat people like people, I'm looked out for. Nobody wants to threaten me, because I don't threaten people. And I think what's really important here is I keep using the word "people." They're not "those people." They're not homeless people. They're just people going through something that a lot of us have never experienced. And a lot of us in this room have had struggle, and some of us have been very lucky and not had as much struggle. So I'm not asking you to just close your eyes and imagine this, because that's crazy. I can't imagine what it would be like to be a black man in the '70s. I can imagine it, but I'll never, ever have that experience. So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't really swing that way. You guys ought to come out. I'm, I'm literally not asking you to, to answer questions. You don't have to tell them who you are. This isn't about you. It's about listening to their stories, looking them in the eyes. When you leave, you won't feel bad. You'll feel amazing. And what you'll also feel is like, maybe, it's not gonna be a comfortable feeling. It's gonna challenge some things, and you're gonna feel yourself growing. And you're gonna go, maybe this isn't exactly what I thought. And I don't like that, because I like being right. But maybe it's not what I thought. And you're gonna meet some people you don't like. Not everybody who comes to the feed is somebody that I'm like, come to my house, babysit my kids. I trust you completely. But there are people there that are genuinely, genuinely awesome people. I've met people that probably worked at a bank you've been to. I've met a nurse that's on the street. It affects a lot of people. And drug addicts are people that, without any other supports, need a way to continue facing the day, because the other option is suicide. So I don't think they're bad people. I think we don't have enough resources, because the Recovery Center's great. But it's not, you know, they're not going out and knocking on tent doors saying, let's get you sober, you know? And you may not want to get sober if you're, you know, feel like there's no tomorrow that's really there for you. So I just wanted to ask you guys if you'd consider it. We're at the Napa Auto, Chase and Colfax. We do it every Friday. We start at 6:30, and we go until we run out. If we run out too early, we get more.
Your time is expired, Ms. Varwig.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Please come.
Mr. Bruce.
Hi, my name is Brad Bruce. I live in Ward Two. I'm once again asking the Lakewood City Council to pass a resolution condemning the use of American weapons on not only the Palestinian civilians, but now the use of American weapons on American civilians. Last Friday, while protesting in the illegal expansion of an illegal Israeli settlement outside the occupied city of Nablus in the West Bank, Ayen Sir Aegi was shot in the back of the head by an Israeli sniper. Aegi was a 26-year-old American citizen living in Washington State. 41,000, 41,000 confirmed people have died at the hands of the Israeli genocidal campaign. And even when American citizens are being killed, our federal government does nothing but ask nicely for the Israeli government to investigate themselves. I will reaffirm that I do not want to be here every two weeks telling you all the same exact thing. This is not a fun use of my time. But Representative Pedersen has never once in the last two years replied to any of the many emails and phone calls that I have sent her away. I am completely powerless, and I come to you asking for your help and your voice as my local representatives to do something. As our federal government sends billions of dollars to a nation committing a genocide, we sit here and discover, discuss whether or not the city should approve the use of temporary housing for homeless, which is fantastic. Thank you, good job. These things are connected, though. I don't think it's that far-fetched to imagine that we could be using the money for homes rather than bombs that we send to Israel to blow people up. We could ignore, we cannot ignore global issues in our local communities. One last thing I will say is that as of two hours ago, it is being reported, while we were all sitting in this room, that the Israeli army bombed the Al Mawazi tent community, killing 40 people and wounding over 60. I don't think there were even 40 people in this room earlier, but imagine that every person in this room was extrajudicially executed via bomb by a foreign occupying army. Please pass the resolution condemning the use of American weapons. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fiore, do we have any more? Okay. All right, with that, we open up general business this evening. The first city council request coming from Counselor Olver. We'll give you the floor. Counselor Olver?
Thank you, Mayor. This, let's, let me get some glasses, so I can actually read my own handwriting. Okay, this, this request was prompted because two things happened. One is that council is discussing requiring new gas stations to install electric vehicle charging units. And also, I recently flew, and I noticed that there was a ton of signs put out, obviously by the airlines and the FAA, warning, asking about lithium batteries and fires. I never did figure out, truthfully, where we're supposed to carry them, but they seem to be very, very concerned about how lithium batteries are starting fires. And I guess if there's a fire on an airplane, it's a bad thing. So I put together this request to send along a note to the LAC to research the background of lithium batteries catching on fire. Because if we're going to put charging stations at, at gas stations, where there, where we know there's a cloud of combustible material, I don't think we should require, um, let's see, I don't think we should require them to put in EV stations if cars are going to come in and catch on fire. I didn't say that right very well at all. But one of the things we were talking about was three, possibly three different charging stations, one fast, two slow. I worry about the fast charging one a lot more than the slow ones. I know when I charge even my phone, it heats up fairly well. And if I was, and that's a slow charge. And so I'm assuming that a fast charge is going to heat up a lot more. And so basically, I just wanted to pass it along to the LAC to investigate how dangerous it will, really will be to have, to have charging stations in gas stations. It's really quite simple. I wrote a lot of other things, but I would just make the motion that we pass along Legislative, Legislative Modification Number 64 to the LAC.
I have two requests to speak. Start with Counselor Labure.
Thank you, Mayor. I love you, Rich. Counselor Olver. But I'm not gonna be supporting this, as you might imagine. You know, charging stations are pretty frequently, I mean, we have them all over. We have, I think, 200,000 in the U.S. right now. And there are a number of fuel stations, like 7-Eleven, that have normalized just having chargers also at the fuel station. And I think if we were worried about sort of a cloud in a fuel station, it'd be real problematic. And I think I've seen people regularly using cigarettes and lighters while they're fueling their cars. And I haven't noticed any explosions of fuel stations in the last, well, my lifetime, at least anywhere I've been. But appreciate the, the interest. I don't want to really send the LAC on a, on this chase, personally. So I will be voting no.
All right. With these council requests, Ms. McKinney-Brown, we don't need a second, right? We just need consensus.
It depends on the action that's being requested. In this particular case, I think that Councilmember Olver is requesting that an item be sent to the LAC. And typically, honestly, in that particular case, sometimes you do that by consensus, and sometimes you do a motion and a second, and then send it there. So either way is fine. If there is a specific action being requested, that would typically happen by a motion.
Okay.
Can I respond to Counselor Labure's remarks first?
Sure.
I, I happened to look up some things, and there's like, there was 4,000 gas station fires last year. I would assume none of them were caused by EV vehicles and charging stations. I, I don't know for sure. But that's why I'm asking the LAC to look into it further. I, I don't know that this is a problem. I would just like to see, have further research on it to make sure it's not going to be a problem, because I don't want the first station that you ever see to be in Lakewood, that blows up to be in Lakewood.
Counselor Matt Guerrero, and then Counselor Low.
I'm also in opposition to this, although there, there certainly are occasional lithium battery fires. I, I think we can all remember when there was a particular model of Samsung that wasn't allowed in your, actually, not allowed in your checked luggage in particular, where it wasn't pressurized, because it might explode, because the battery was faulty. So like, that happens. I think that, to me, with any request to the LAC, my question is, is like, what, what might we do with this information? So if there was a world where lithium batteries in electric vehicles were genuinely considered more hazardous than gasoline in terms of flammability, danger, breathability, climate impact, expense, personal hazard and community hazard, yes, perhaps it would make sense then for us to legislate differently. But I don't believe that there is a world where all of, where that is true. So recognizing that, like, yeah, absolutely, there are lithium battery fires. They, they happen. It's not great. And I think in general, there's a global problem with, what do we do with our move to, lithium battery storage and lithium mines are bad? And are we sacrificing other parts of the world in order to try to reduce our impact here without having to actually cut back on how much we consume of these goods on the planet? I'm very aligned with all, with all of those subtleties that I might, I might benefit your proposal for having. And I, but I think that the, if the long, if the long and the short of it is like, what would we do with this information from the LAC? There, there is just simply not going to be the type of evidence that would convince me that a battery charging station at a gas station or solar storage, which is also lithium stacks, would be more hazardous than our current energy production supply, both in the short and the long term. So I will be a no.
Counselor Low.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Olver. You and I had a good discussion about, you know, the, our desire to give the LAC, you know, potentially some meaty work, and I'm, I'm for that. I think we could actually be leveraging and utilizing the LAC on some important research projects going forward. So would certainly support that. I wonder, we, you and I kind of briefly touched on this. I wonder if this could be satisfied by just, just maybe asking our city manager to just commit that, to the extent that an ordinance moves forward over the next month or year, that is already being worked on, that would put in place charging stations, can we just get a, an assurance from staff that there's no safety issue involved in, in, in doing so? Or that staff has sort of confirmed that there's no safety issue? And perhaps that would satisfy that?
Of course, we would be able to provide that information.
Okay. So I think, I, I think in this case, Counselor Olver, that would, that would be enough to satisfy the concern, at least by, by my book. So respectfully, I'll be voting no. But I think, I appreciate the desire to make sure that the communities are safe and that we don't take action that, that creates the possibility of accidents.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and vote, so we can see the vote on this? So a vote for yes would be to send it to the LAC.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe we'll still need a second. The motion was made, but I didn't record a second.
Were you just doing a consensus? If you're just doing a consensus, then it's fine.
Do you just want nodding heads?
Yeah. A consensus of nodding heads. A consensus of nodding heads. If you want to go to a full-on vote, I don't think we actually have a full motion yet.
Okay. Well, to be consistent with the way that we've been doing it, let's go on a full-on vote. Sorry for the confusion tonight, everybody. So what that means is we need to back up and we do need to have a second before we actually do the vote. So I'll go ahead and clear this. And, okay. Councilor Olver, you made the motion. Do we have a second?
Go ahead and second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. We will now cast our votes. Okay, we're going to clear the votes and we're going to re-vote. Two yeses, nine nays, the nays being Strom, Maite Guerrero, Stewart, Sharazai, Labure, Nystrom, Lowe, Cruz and Sinks. And we have a second council request on general business this evening. Councilor Lowe, I will hand the floor to you.
Good evening. And, you know, honestly, it's, it's getting late enough in the, in the evening. I don't necessarily need to subject counsel to, to the four slides. They, they have access to them. We can do it if folks have questions. Thank you so much. Sorry. I appreciate that. Let me just sort of do a voiceover and then if, if folks do want to go a little bit deeper in the weeds, we, we do have the slides that we can walk through. Let me back up and just frame this and then I'll, I'll make the motion. You know, one of the things I think we've all heard about, you know, in our campaigns, in the community, in talking to residents in Lakewood, certainly in this chamber over the last year, is concern about crime and public safety. I think it's a very real issue. I think our city is, is working very hard to get out in front of it. But I, I think it's an issue that we absolutely should take seriously. As we've talked about, you know, I think it's important for this conversation to be based in data. Crime and violent crime did go up in the years right after COVID. They went down in 2022. Juvenile crime throughout the metro region has gone down, but juvenile violent crime has actually gone up, interestingly, according to a report that, that the former Denver police chief did recently. At the request of at least one counselor, I, I asked our, our police for sort of Lakewood specific data on this. It will probably take a little bit longer to look at that, and I think it'll be instructive and useful to look at that. But it is, it's, it's a real issue. This is one of the reasons why in our planning session earlier this year, we set, quote, "increased utilization of evidence-based prevention and diversion programming" as one of our stated goals for improving public safety outcomes. One of the, I think, most effective things that we could do as, as a council to signal support is to signal, clearly signal that we want to prioritize evidence-based programs that actually reduce crime. From some of the work I've done in a, in a previous life, when I worked for the state, I, I worked with a number of different programs and partners when I was in the governor's budget office, on one program in particular called multi-systemic therapy. And there's a little bit more information about multi-systemic therapy that's, that's offered in the packet. Multi-systemic therapy, or MST, is a highly, highly evidence-based program that's offered in the community. It's a home visiting model where trained teams of therapists do home visits multiple times a week for three to six months with youth ages 10 to 18 who have become system-involved. System involvement could be something as trivial as truancy, or it could be something as serious as, you know, a very serious violent crime. The therapist is trained to provide intensive services over several months to the kiddo, and not just the kiddo, but the kiddo's family, to work with the family, to de-escalate, to figure out, you know, strength-based opportunities for that youth to get more involved in the community, whether it's, you know, joining a team or doing an after-school activity. And they work to reduce the influence of negative factors like, like negative peer groups. I guess the point I want to make to council is, I think some of you know I'm, I'm very interested and passionate in, in actually looking at the evidence and looking at the data around some of these programs. And MST is one of the most evidence-based approaches in the country in terms of actually preventing crime. It's been shown by multiple really rigorous evaluations that have followed families served by this program over a decade or more to significantly reduce crime. And I'll just, some of this is summarized in the slides, but just to call out a couple of the statistics, 44% reductions in arrests, 57% reduction in days incarcerated. That was according to a lot of, a two-decade follow-up randomized evaluation that followed kids that got MST in Missouri and showed that, on average, it cut years off of the, the average kid's time incarcerated over the next decade plus. 64% reduction in drug-related arrests. It's also been shown to reduce out-of-home placements. I mention all this because, you know, as, as, as we've heard from our staff, there are ongoing discussions with a really important, fabulous partner in our community, Jefferson Center for Mental Health, which is our community-based health provider. And currently, they offer a number of really important, useful, worthwhile services in our community, and I'm delighted that the city is engaged in discussion to support them. They do not currently offer MST. My thought in, in offering this, this item is, is to signal our desire to bring this program to Lakewood and to Jefferson County. I took the liberty of drafting a resolution. Frankly, I, I thought to try to make everyone's lives easier by having a draft. Perhaps, we, we actually should have waited on drafting a, a resolution for various reasons. But in any event, we're not actually passing a resolution tonight. I just wanted to sort of offer up a draft illustrated resolution. And as a very initial first step, ask for, for council to, to signal to staff and to our city attorney that we would like to see this resolution, or a resolution like it, come back in front of us to pass. So that's what I'd like to do tonight. I've had some discussions with, among others, Councilor Ryan, and he made the constructive suggestion that perhaps we could actually amend it to say, before the resolution comes back to council, we, we request either a study session on sort of generally crime prevention, mental health, mental health services, a chance to sort of meet with Jefferson Center for Mental Health staff to learn more about their presence in the community before we actually pass this, or alternatively, given how crowded our calendar already is, just ask for a meeting with staff with Jefferson Center for Mental Health to just talk to them about this resolution before we actually pass it. I guess three final points I want to make. One, the, the, the goal here is not to dictate service for anyone. It's, it's just to make a, a really valuable service available in the community. Two, this program is actually Medicaid reimbursable. So all the, the only intent here is to actually ask Jefferson Center for Mental Health to explore the feasibility of, of moving forward with this option. And three, I'm incredibly open to wording changes on this resolution before it comes back to council, including making clear that, you know, this will be offered not just in Lakewood, but throughout Jefferson, Jefferson County, because it's being offered by Jefferson Center for Mental Health. So this seemed like a really worthwhile, useful thing that we can do to signal that we support evidence-based programming. We can make further changes to the resolution. I'm happy to work with staff if a resolution isn't the way to go, to look for other options to signal support for, for this priority. But I think this is a really important step that we can take to signal our support for, for bringing more evidence-based services to Lakewood and to fill a gap that I think clearly exists in our community. And I'm sorry if I've exceeded my five minutes. So with all that said, the, the motion that I have here is, I move the council direct staff and the city attorney to review the enclosed draft resolution expressing council's general support for bringing multi-systemic therapy services to Lakewood, make modifications to the text as may be advisable or legally sound, and bring a final resolution back to council for final passage.
Second.
And Councilor Ryan might have an amendment to that.
Mayor Protam Sharazai, then Councilor Maite Guerrero.
Uh, yes, thank you. I appreciate the, the willingness to continue the conversation on the resolution because when you look at the request for consideration, you know, having some advocacy on evidence-based, I'm for that. But I also am a person who works in a nonprofit, and I understand what it means to come when you need funding to a partner agency. And for that partner agency to put some requirements on that feels uncomfortable for me, in particular, since this is not our jurisdiction. This is a good partner of ours. And I, I understand that there's an opportunity for us to continue that conversation. So unless there is a real softening of the language for the resolution and sort of what our expectations are, I want to see success for the Mental Health Center. And I know that they are facing some, some tough choices here in the future. So for me, it's really hard for some of the language in the resolution as it currently stands, where particularly the demonstrable clause, that's a ask for a staff that's already really at capacity. But I understand that there's a willingness to look at that further. So I'm happy to be a yes tonight, but if this resolution doesn't amend significantly, I would be a no, which I think comes as no surprise. So thank you. I have sort of very similar feedback, which is I'm a very enthusiastic yes on the concept and therefore on this, this evening, and just share concerns of recognizing that, you know, wanting, wanting a resolution with teeth, which I sympathize with, but that, yeah, I think I just have similar concerns about like the capacity and ability for this to be a program that is actualized in the near term. And so I think wanting to absolutely, clearly signal that improving these types of upstream evidence-based interventions for youth is really critical and that this is an example of something that would be necessary. But I know that it is also very budget-heavy. And so I definitely wouldn't want to put something into a resolution that could like inhibit their funding in the future or our ability to like collaborate with them on things. And so for me, that's like the line. So there are aspects of the resolution that I'm very in favor of and like a couple of things that are misaligned for me. And so that's where I'm at. And in this moment, I'm enthusiastic yes, though, because I think this is a conversation that, like frankly, we should be having a lot, right? We should be having this conversation often. We should be learning about these things, both at our level and how we're able to encourage county-level solutions. And I think in particular, when we're talking about public safety, which obviously comes up in lots of different ways, this notion of actually like that programs that are upstream interventions exist is, is really critical as a part of that conversation. And I want to thank Councilor Lowe for bringing this this evening.
Counselor Stewart.
Yeah, I, I share very similar sentiments. I mean, as a therapist myself, I, you know, strove every day to practice evidence-based interventions and therapy. They're really critical. Why are we doing something if there's no evidence that it works? And also, I've also been a Medicaid provider. And just because something is reimbursable does not mean that it's feasible to offer because that is another additional layer of difficulty and financial complexity that sometimes is frankly infeasible. And to echo Counselor Sharazai and Counselor Maite Guerrero, I feel extreme discomfort with anything that rides up to the line of providing any sort of demands or direction on a program that we frankly have just very limited expertise to direct. I think that, that is something that would concern me greatly. I am very supportive, however, of signaling our desire to continue to increase evidence-based diversion and crime prevention programs. And this is clearly one that has a lot of efficacy and evidence behind it. And if I'm correct, when we spoke earlier, Jefferson Center for Mental Health actually did provide this at one point in time. It just became financially infeasible because it's a pretty heavy lift. And so I'm just wondering, and I don't want to just completely derail us, but you offered a couple of additional options that I think I would be amenable to moving forward with, that I think could actually get at the heart of what we want to do, which is that at the end of the day, we want to make sure that as a community, we're coming together to provide the best services that we possibly can and the most evidence-based services to, at the end of the day, get at the outcomes that these types of programs have been shown to get. So I'm curious if, I mean, happy to, happy to do a study session, but the suggestion of even having a meeting with the staff there and really understanding what the barriers to care are so that we can work together on a shared solution for that feels like we could actually drive at the change that we want to see. You know, I know Lakewood was able to get a grant for a law enforcement assisted diversion program that has been really effective and incredible. And I'm just curious, you know, I know these programs are Medicaid reimbursable, but again, I've been on the other end as a provider of Medicaid reimbursement, and I can tell you, you can't live off of that very often. And so I'm just wondering, are there opportunities that we, to, to even partner and, and go after money that actually makes a program like this feasible so that it actually happens? And, and not only signal our support for something like this, but like, put some capacity behind actually, like trying to get something like this off the ground in some way, which might take a little bit longer. But I'm very supportive of, you know, moving this forward tonight because I think it's really essential. But I, like a couple of my colleagues, have some hesitancy around the wording of the resolution. And frankly, I'm just wondering if that is the, the solution that's actually going to get us the outcomes that we want, or if there's perhaps something, something else. That's all.
Counselor Lowe is going to respond.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Stewart, Maite Guerrero and Sharazai. I appreciate the feedback. One, I, I think Counselor Ryan's suggestion to me earlier that we start with a meeting with Jeffco Center for Mental Health before we pass this is a excellent constructive idea. I'm fully in support of that. I think that makes a great deal of sense. My goal here is to signal that this is something that council cares about. So bottom line, all I'm asking my colleagues tonight to do is to approve moving this forward in the process, which is to say, basically signal to staff and to our city attorney that we're interested in doing something and that we'd like to set up a meeting with Jeffco Center for Mental Health first in the process. I, I will, I will just briefly say, I mean, the, I, I'm happy to wordsmith this. I'm happy to change the wording around entirely, right? I mean, the, the way that we, I worded section two was to say, in any further discussion with JCMH, Jefferson Center for Mental Health, over how best to support JCMH services, to make clear that it is a priority for the city to see a demonstrable effort by JCMH to explore all feasible options to bringing MST services to Lakewood and to request updates on this effort as part of any further negotiations or discussions. So, I mean, bluntly, they could, they are perfectly free to come back and say, we've looked into the feasibility of this and it doesn't pencil, right? The Medicaid dollars aren't there. Right? Like, that would 100% satisfy, I just want to be clear about this. That would more than satisfy the wording in this resolution. I will say that I have, you know, I, staff helpfully set up an initial meeting with JCMH. We talked to them about this. I've engaged with, with some folks, you know, I've, I've had discussions with some genuine MST experts. And they are working with a number of community mental health centers who actually have been able, in some parts of the state, to fully cover the cost of the service with Medicaid. Counselor Stewart is entirely correct that what I've learned in, in the, in, in these discussions is that MST was offered in Jefferson County a decade ago, and it was discontinued. I believe cost was one issue. But since then, Medicaid reimbursement has gone through about three different changes in the way that these payments are processed. So my, my request, I think, is fairly modest. I just want them to look into whether there's a way to do this. Like, is there a way that we can fund this with Medicaid dollars? And if the answer is no, I'm certainly not suggesting we force them to do, to do something that's not financially feasible. That's not, that, I don't think that would be responsible. That's not what I want. Nor am I suggesting that we, we force anyone to take the service. I just, I, I I just, I know from the many, many communities in Colorado where this is offered, that whenever MST services are offered, the demand is through the roof because we've got kiddos that need help. And the only reason I'm pushing this pretty hard is this just seems like something really concrete and tangible that could be done in Jefferson County to actually reduce crime in a preventative way, rather than having to wait for someone to commit a violent crime and then arrest and incarcerate them. So that's all to say, of course, I've heard the message from several of my colleagues. I'm happy to look at meaningful changes to the wording here. My request tonight is simply that we pass the resolution with the understanding or the friendly amendment that there first be either a study session or a meeting at staff's discretion with Jeffco Mental Health Center. I would request that counselors that are interested in joining that meeting, if it's a meeting, have the opportunity to join that meeting, to learn more about this issue. And that we then, you know, I'm happy to work with staff at that point to either bring back a modified version of the resolution, or if staff feels that it would be more constructive to pursue another route, to do another route. I would just like to signal that this is a priority and something that Lakewood City Council feels strongly about. And I do legitimately feel that if we can lead in Jefferson County and bring some others along with us to build support for making this program available, it really would go a long way to helping deliver on a really important goal that we all set in our retreat. So my ask tonight is just vote yes on the request for council action and I will certainly commit to my colleagues to work with everyone who's shared their concerns with me before tonight and tonight on wording modifications to the point that folks are satisfied before we actually bring a resolution back. Or if we can't get there, find some other alternate pathway to signal support for this program.
Counselor Labir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to Counselor Lowe, just appreciate you bringing this. I think this is a portent initiative and as you mentioned, something that we did discuss a little bit over the, our annual planning session. I will be supporting it. You know, and actually, you know, I like that you tried to ground this a little bit with some language in a resolution. It sounds like you're amenable to moving things around and working with everyone to get to something that has some sort of consensus, but I do like that it's grounded in language and grounded in an action item. It's easily digestible, you know, and I think frankly, a lot of things we've done over the years and in my time on council has been a little squishy, you know, when you don't have these kind of language in front of you. And so I like the fact that this is sort of a more direct, I think, approach in some fashion. And I, you know, I think we would be well-served by, you know, taking more actions like this that are really clear and have some sort of clear expectations and goals, because I think we've gotten in some trouble in the past from not having that. So I appreciate you bringing this. I look forward to supporting it and look forward to seeing how this evolves, you know, over time and just thanks for bringing it.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. And yeah, I want to, similarly to Counselor Labir's start, by saying that I really do appreciate you really sticking to your evidence-based policy promises and for teaching us all, I didn't personally know about this, I'll speak to myself, teaching me about this program and the type of opportunities that it could bring to our county. And I think that even the discussion, I think, has illustrated that this is an area of interest and one that is worth moving forward in some capacity. And also similarly to Counselor Labir's point, I think, to me, I also appreciate us having a conversation with this in some sort of, you know, words on paper, even though sometimes that creates more of a reaction space, I know. You know, I think that as knowing kind of where this started and where this has come, a lot of us navigating kind of different points of feedback on the best ways to move forward and the best ways of, you know, getting across the message, I think, is certainly not easy. And so I thank you for moving this forward and for generating the conversation. And so I think from a process point, I will be enthusiastically supportive of this and am excited to see kind of what moves next on that. And then I think on the more content and less process-based kind of points, you know, I totally understand and as somebody who's worked in a nonprofit sector myself, the understanding that putting too many strings with funding, which a resolution can't do anyway, is, you know, is not the best way to have a collaborative relationship. And I think that in a partnership, when there are times when funding is on the table or a new council is here and we're trying to figure out what our priorities are as a city, having conversations about what kinds of things we want to see and help facilitate in our community is important and it is important to take a stand on that in a way that is easily communicable from our end and from staff's end. And so I think that while, you know, it has to follow the guidelines of not being too directive on funding, et cetera, et cetera, in a resolution, if one were to move forward, I think expressing a clear point of priority for looking into the feasibility of bringing back this type of program makes a lot of sense and I look forward to talking about that further.
Counselor Ryan.
I'm another one of the folks who had never heard of this program before and it sounds very intriguing. And I appreciate that you are bringing this to our attention because it could potentially be an excellent tool to help combat a number of very serious issues. What I'm hearing from some of the city counselors is the comment that I also share is that even though we can read each particular word and it doesn't sound like it's directing, when you read the whole resolution as a whole, it sounds very much like we are directing another agency to do something. And I know we could try and wordsmith now. I'm frankly not in the mindset right now to be able to try and rewrite the resolution in that way. So it strikes me is that there are two ways that you might consider proceeding and I'd love to hear from you as to which to do. One of the things that came to mind and I'm echoing a comment that Counselor Stewart, I think, made, she'll correct me if I'm wrong, but one of them is simply to ditch the resolution aspect of the request and simply have asked the city to schedule and hold a study session inviting JCMH to discuss MST services and any barriers to providing MST services in Lakewood, or that the city would facilitate and hold a meeting with JCMH that is open to the public in which interested counselors can learn about MST services and any barriers to providing MST services in Lakewood. And you can take that language and run with it, to me, in two ways. You can either say that prior to any vote on resolution, one of these two things will happen, or throw away the resolution aspect and just get to this informational stage. Because as excited as I am about the potential of these MST services, I frankly don't know enough about them to know whether, if this is a service that's offered, do we lose some other service? What are the decision-making that our professionals, that we are paying money to, are having to make these tough decisions with limited resources? I want to know all that information. I want to know more about the program before I can vote to proceed with that. So I leave it to you as to how you want to proceed. You can read the room better than I can as to whether we ditch the resolution aspect and just stick to informational piece, or if you really want to have that resolution piece and tack it at the end.
Counselor Lowe.
Well, I'll respond, but I wonder if I might actually just, if it's in order, ask Ms. Hodgson to weigh in, just process-wise, on her view of this. It seems to me that there is consensus for either having a study session or having a meeting with Jefferson Center for Mental Health with Ms. Hodgson, whatever other staff are relevant. I would certainly appreciate the opportunity to at least listen in and if necessary, you know, I think it would be advisable to go to the step of making it a public meeting such that other counselors could join that conversation if possible. So I guess threshold question, Ms. Hodgson, would you be willing to sort of commit to that tonight as a next step?
So forgive my voice, but yes, absolutely would commit to that. It seems as if this meeting might be beneficial to be held in a format like the here, so that the public could also learn about this program, especially if it means additional funding coming from the city and other entities within the county. So the experts by far are the people at Jefferson Center for Mental Health. They are a wonderful partner to us and we've had a partnership for many years. I'm confident that their CEO and staff would be more than willing to join us in some sort of format, I'm thinking a study session. And yes, our agendas are crowded, but we could do, if you're willing, we could schedule a meeting an hour before a regular meeting. So it would be a special meeting before a meeting and we could have that conversation. And I think from that, we would have a better sense for how do we move forward and how do we influence the folks at Jefferson Center for Mental Health to look further into initiating a program like this again. So of course we can do it. I just really want to advocate to have it in a format where the public could also learn about the program. And forgive my voice again.
No, of course. Thank you, Ms. Hodgson. Well, quite frankly, the only reason I didn't have that as my original proposal is, you know, a sense of how crowded our calendar is over the next few months and not wanting to test my colleagues' patience on adding another meeting to the calendar. But if there, it sounds like there is interest enough in actually having a sit-down with Jefferson Center for Mental Health. I certainly agree that that is a constructive proposal. I would, I'd like to preserve the option to do some resolution way down the road and I think sort of a request for council action opens the door for us to work with staff, but I will absolutely commit to not bring the resolution back until we've worked with both the city attorney, city staff, and JCMH and we have buy-in for moving forward and buy-in from my colleagues from bringing it back. And it may well be that we don't need a resolution, that just the act of, you know, sort of signaling that we're interested in this and asking for the meeting is enough to kind of jump-start these discussions. So I would propose that we stick with the motion, realizing that we're not going to bring the resolution back and if we do, it'll be in a different form and you all have plenty of opportunities to change it, amend it, or vote no on it. And then just add as a friendly amendment that first, we will schedule a one-hour meeting with Jefferson Center for Mental Health that will be in the public domain for us to learn more and talk more about how to collaborate with them. Would that be satisfactory, Counselor Ryan?
I'd be curious to hear from staff. I wonder how friendly or how nervous they might be if they came here knowing that this resolution is hanging over their head. So my suggestion might be, and again, I'm not the expert here, to table this particular resolution and which you can revive at some later date and just move forward with the meeting first and then depending on the outcome of the meeting, you can decide whether you want to revive this resolution or come up with something completely different. That's my own suggestion.
No, I appreciate, this is not directed at anyone in particular. I wish we weren't making this particular decision on the fly right now at 10:04 PM, but it's a constructive suggestion. I frankly think there's an argument that having the resolution just out there as a draft is a useful signaling device, that like, we care about this. So I guess on balance, my preference would be to just move forward with the request for council action, but if there's anyone on council that really would prefer that we go with Counselor Ryan's approach of just having the meeting first, I guess frankly, my concern is if we have the meeting first, then if we later want to do a resolution, we've got to go through this whole process again, the way that our processes are currently set up, before a resolution can actually be brought. But...
I don't see we see a reason we couldn't loop things together. We don't need to create...
I'm happy to have the motion be to start by requesting a meeting with Jefferson Center for Mental Health and have counsel have that be at the starting point and we can work with everyone else on council and with staff on a resolution going forward. So if that seems to be where the room is, we can start with a public meeting.
Counselor Mayat Guerrero, then Counselor Cruz.
I'll just, I'll put out there that if, I think that the idea of a resolution that signals that this is important to us and that we want to find and identify ways to collaborate with a county and perhaps beyond on MST, MTS, MST in particular and other upstream interventions, like if, right, if we workshop that resolution, I'm very aligned with that resolution. I don't think that you should take that off the table. I think that you should make a spot on that and I think if the timeline gets a little weird, it gets a little weird. That's the nature of this job. I also would like to say that I don't think that this makes sense as an entire study session. I don't think that it needs to be added to our calendars. I don't think we need to direct staff to have like a really specific meeting on this. I think that we can read and ask questions and learn as counselors, like ahead of having to vote on a resolution. And that there is like this effort, being a really genuine, good-faith effort, I think, by Counselor Lowe, that I trust around workshopping that with staff, making it make sense, making it feel potentially less potentially punitive and still really on these like, like a genuine and intentional signal at a time that's important and it is uncomfortable to pressure friends, but like I'm still aligned with the like, sort of intended purpose or the stated purpose of that and the stated timing of that. And when I look at our schedules and our study sessions and our calendars, I don't know that that actually like moves us forward in a significant way. I think it takes more time than trying to figure out the resolution of the full body and also of the staff, if I'm being like really honest. And I think that a resolution, which might end up with like mixed split votes, which is allowed, does still, A, signal that this particular program is something we want to be pushing on, that Jefferson Center for Mental Health is an organization that we want it to be working with and hopefully helps us all to like catalyze or reinvest our energy and spirit around the importance of highly ambitious, but like necessary and important programming over time. So I know that like my original statement of support was like, I'm supportive if, but to me, adding meetings, adding bureaucracy and adding directives to staff, adding directives to this organization to like show up for us, doesn't actually make more sense to me. I think if the intent is to like signal this importance and to start a conversation and for us as council people to all get better at this, at learning this and to understanding this realm of solution, you know, I think that a resolution's an okay place to start. That's for me.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. Yeah, I think my co-counselor said a lot of what I was thinking, so I appreciate you, Counselor Mayat Guerrero, for articulating that. You know, yeah, I think this is another instance on where maybe not all of us have to agree on the way forward, even if we agree potentially on the values of what we're pushing. And to me, I think a motion that includes the possibility of a resolution, having a meeting that doesn't necessarily have to be as formal as this, but like any public meeting, you know, could have folks in the public attendant, maybe it could be something less formal, like some of our other like study session, like workshop kinds of things on stuff, that to me would make sense if it would be a point of interest, but I don't think adding kind of formality in that respect is useful for like the timeliness of this. And I think, to me, I would be a yes vote on, you know, moving a resolution forward to vote on at a later time.
Counselor Stewart, or I'm sorry, Counselor Shar Azai, then Counselor Stewart.
Yes, thank you. So in my original line of thinking, going back to the demonstrable, I really love that word. It's just, having a meeting feels like we're putting more work on this agency that, again, is really at capacity. So I don't, I don't agree with the resolution as it's written now, but I'm open to amendments on that. I'm really not in favor of us putting more work on this agency to like convince us of something that we're not sure about right now and frankly, to ask staff to, who's already at capacity, like we have a lot on the agenda of things that we are hearing from our community about and I am supportive of evidence-based, but this... but this feels like a, not a primary priority right now, like, we've got some really big things ahead of us. So if we can just continue to workshop the resolution to get to some sort of shared value that we're trying to articulate, I would much rather than us adding another meeting that many people would have to coordinate.
That makes sense. In my mind, the purpose of a meeting would not be to learn about MST, would be to learn from the organization themselves how we can best actually make something like this happen, which I think is actually what we would love to do. Otherwise, what's the point? So I totally understand the capacity issue, happy to move forward with workshopping some language that signals our deep commitment and support to being a good partner to the mental health provider in our county, in supporting and doing what we can as a city and a municipality to help support effective, evidence-based, mental health programming and prevention. I would be very supportive of something like that. Again, it is non-directive. I really feel uncomfortable with us as a city council directing another agency that we have no authority over. At the end of the day, but if we, if all, if what we want to do is signal our desire to be a good partner and actually be functionally supportive in bringing forward something like this, and not just saying, hey, guys, we'd really like you to do this, so go, like, that's, I do not want to do that. If, if we can workshop something that says, we as a city of Lakewood want to be a good partner in bringing programs like this into our community, I am delighted to support that. And we don't have to have a meeting, I'm happy to do that, and just signaling our support to our community partner who provides such essential services is something that I would be wildly supportive of.
Counselor Sinks.
I'll defer to Counselor Lo. I think you might have a response to that. Is that true?
You go ahead.
Okay, great. So, wow, we've come up with a lot of different things here. And I like what Counselor Stewart just said. Before I heard what she was going to say and hit my request to speak button, I was going to say, well, we have to hear from Jefferson County for Mental Health, because they're the ones that we're wanting to do it, and we have to hear. Are they going to do it, you know? Are they amenable to that? So we have to hear from them in some way. However, just a generic statement like Counselor Stewart just mentioned, I would be all for that, too. So, oh my gosh, I'm really just like, I don't know what we're voting on. A lot of clarity needed here.
Go ahead.
Mayor, if I may, truthfully, I had no, I thought I was drafting a fairly, a very non-controversial resolution that signaled support. I clearly misread the room on this, and there are a number of objections that have come out to this wording that I just didn't anticipate. So fair enough, lesson learned, appreciate all the feedback. I think this is a constructive discussion. I didn't ask for sort of a study session or meeting precisely because of some of the concerns that I've heard raised, which is, we're over meeting, we've got a lot on our calendar, why add more bureaucracy? I think at the end of the day, my request for council would be, let's move the process forward by signaling that we're interested in doing something on this. I would then like to request that I, that Ms. Hodgson, if I can ask in her busy schedule for, for time to sit down with her to just chart a path forward on this, once the request for council action passes, and I will put my heads together with Ms. Hodgson, talk to the mayor, and then we'll, we will decide at that point whether it makes the most sense to have a staff-led meeting with Jeffco Center for Mental Health, a public meeting that isn't a study session, a study session, or workshop a resolution to then bring it back to staff. But I think a strong vote in favor of doing something would be a good starting point for us to then work with staff to figure out whether it's a meeting or a resolution, or both those things in sequential order. So I think my request for council would be, vote for the request for council action, and I will not bring the resolution back until it's been wordsmithed in the way that the, my colleagues have suggested and that staff has weighed in on. So let's just pass the original resolution and leave it up to sort of further conversations to figure out what the next step is.
All right, yes. Oh, okay. With that, let's go ahead and vote.
I think we're missing one, Counselor.
While we're waiting, can I just seek clarification? We're just voting to support the current council request.
Yes. The original motion I moved, which is I moved the council direct staff and state attorney to review the enclosed draft resolution, expressing council's general support for bringing MST services to Lakewood, make modifications to the text as may be advisable or legally sound, and bring a final resolution back to council. And we will then work with staff on what to actually do with that before we bring it back. There's no deadline, there's no timeline on it, there's plenty of scope to revise the wording or table it and do a meeting instead.
Beautiful. Thank you, Counselor Lo.
Second, if we need one.
We got a second and a third. Okay. With that, everybody's here now, let's go ahead and cast our votes, please.
All right, and that passes 10, or, sorry, 11 days, 08. All right, and we do not have an executive report this evening, so I will go ahead and transition us over to city council reports, starting with Ward 1.
I'll start. We had a ward meeting on Saturday, and our next one will be October 19th. It will not be the first Saturday of October because of scheduling challenges, so October 19th is our next one. That's all I have.
No report.
Two.
Thank you. I'll be quick. So September 21st is going to be a fun day in Ward 2. We will have first start the day at Love Lakewood Day. I personally will be attending, there's a 14th Avenue cleanup in partnership with Two Creeks Neighborhood Organization, so please sign up for that. You can see fun things, the dumpster got really full last year, so you can sign up for that at servespotlakewood.com/love-lakewood-day. Then, because you didn't get enough of us, you can come to our Ward 2 meeting at 2:30 PM at the Washington Heights Arts Center, where we will have special guest Clerk Amanda Gonzalez, who is going to talk all things election, and also have another lovely, wonderful meeting. Also, there will be a celebration of the new theater space opening at 1560 Teller Street in the West, 40 West Arts District. It will be Three Leeches, The Lab, and Flamboyant Theater, celebrating their opening at 7:00 PM. And just as a personal point of privilege, as a proud person with Puerto Rican heritage, really excited that we're getting a Puerto Rican theater in Lakewood in my district, so please come out and support them. That'll be at 7:00 PM. And then that is all I will say. Thank you, everybody, for a great meeting.
No report.
I have no report.
I have no report.
No report.
We have a ward meeting on September 19th at Green Mountain Rec Center at 7 o'clock, and then the only other thing I want to say is, on our consent agenda, we approved a number of things dealing with Alameda bid and West Colfax bid. For those of you who pay attention to the work that they do, it's incredible, the work that they do for the amount of money that they do it, and they're very lean and mean, and I'm very proud that we have such fantastic organizations supporting Lakewood.
I'm also going to do no report. Thank you.
Second.
All right, and I will bring us home this evening. I meant to actually announce earlier this evening, the, last month, we voted, updated our policies and procedures, and you may remember that included some changes to our guidelines, our rules around public comment. Wanted to let everybody know, it's taken a little bit to get some of our processes in place and software that is pending to be utilized for this. So we will actually be starting in our next regular business meeting with our new public comment rules and our new simplified parliamentary procedure, Bob's Rules of Order, so expect that for our next meeting. We will have little cheat sheets, not unlike the ones that we have right now, but in the meantime, we all got a lovely free copy of Bob's Rules of Order. I would encourage everybody to brush up on those skills before we come back together. And we are also, for the public, getting ready to go into the ever-exciting budget season, so you will hear from us three different meetings over the next two months, where we'll get, you know, roll up our sleeves and start to have conversations around the budget for 2025. It'll start off next Monday with a study session where we'll get a pretty in-depth presentation from our CFO, as well as a number of our department directors, giving us the lay of the land of the impact to their departments. And then we'll have a couple of additional meetings thereafter, and for those that really want to be involved, the Budget Nautic Committee will be meeting through that process as well, if you'd like to join us for that. I will just close this evening by sending out a huge thank you to our property owners and Mission Trace, a very well-known property, very well-utilized property, as someone that has lived in Ward 5 for 20-plus years. Mission Trace is one that my family has utilized, we number of restaurants, Ubi Pies, Ubi Poppy, Natural Grocers, a pediatrician, driving, teaching. Honestly, I think I've probably been to all of them, but our owners of Mission Trace are very community-minded, and this past weekend hosted a really great block party and invited the public, and made it a really great opportunity to integrate small businesses that are involved in that center with our neighborhoods. It was really great. Thank Mayor Protem for coming all the way down to Ward 5 to join us. It was a really great afternoon, it was warm, but we had Kona ice, and it couldn't have been better. So thank you to our Mission Trace and Westgate Center owners for doing that. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting this evening. Thank you, everybody, for joining.